Do you see anybody, Karina?
I see Kelly. John Shipman, Khalil, Trey Abney. Iris. No board members yet on there.
Hi, everyone. So for all of you who are attending tonight's meeting, we're just waiting on a quorum. We need one more member and then we will be able to start. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Karina.
Anna, we have you in very unusual voice. Hey, Anna, if you can hear us, I'm going to recommend that you call in on your phone rather than use your computer voice.
Commissioners, so we can get them online. Sorry, I'm just about to get to my house and wifi.
Oh, no worries. No worries. Oh, Anna says, what commissioners are missing so we can give them a ring?
Trish, Ed, Sonia, Jason.
Do you guys want to call some of those people, Erin or Karina? You have their numbers probably handy.
I don't have their contact information, but I did hear from Jason today. He will be joining late.
Okay.
Erin, do you have their phone numbers?
Yeah, I can log into OnBase really quick and get them.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I would try Sonia first only because Trish works. Usually it's kind of driving press down.
But I will call Trish just to get everyone called. Hi, everyone. Trish is going to join us in a few minutes. She's going to call in. She had some family challenges and so I won't get into it here, but that that's the situation there. Some family challenges and she's going to though call in 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 just a few minutes, so we should have our quorum.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah. So she was there for a minute and then we lost her. So I don't know. Oh, there she is. Now, Trish, you feel free to turn off your video, Trish. There you go. Feel free to turn off your video so you can just do your driving thing and. Ken.
All right. So it looks like we have a quorum. Madam Chair, you're free to call your meeting to order.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Urban Forestry Commission on Monday, April 4th, 2022. Do we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Cynthia Albright.
Pleasant.
Anna Higgins.
Present.
Bruce Barr.
Present.
Trish Greif.
She said present, but Trish, you're muted.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Ed Hawkins. Gary Gentink.
Gary, you're muted.
Perfect, thank you. Sonia Lucatero. And Jason Ludden. Okay, and we have a quorum.
And you introduce the non-commissioner members too.
Sure, would everyone like to go around and introduce themselves for the record?
Well, we can't. We don't know what order it shows up.
Okay, all I see is Councilmember Dewar is here. I see Matt Basil, the urban forester is here, Matt Brazina, Parks Manager, Kelly Mullen, remind me of your title, Kelly, I'm sorry.
Principal Planner.
Thank you. Jonathan Shipman, I see is here. Let's see. And Kelly Wilsey is here. And Karina Mercier. Thank you, Karina. Sorry, you got skipped over. No worries.
Trish, I just want to say if you wanted, you don't have to leave on your video. Most of the people don't have it on. But you could do whatever, whatever works for you, given where you are.
All right, yes, let me see what I can do to remove my happy face driving. And I'm not truly how to do it because I'm on the phone and it's not.
Swipe to the side. And then it should show up video and.
Well, maybe I'll just show it out, but I've got it up, but I'm. Sorry, you might be stuck with me for a while.
I can take care of that for you, Trish.
Oh, Karina can help you with that. Is that correct, Karina?
Yeah, looks like I.
Yay. Okay, I am listening and go right ahead. Thank you.
So it's time in the agenda to have a public comment, virtual public comment on any item that somebody may wish to speak on, whether on the agenda or not off the agenda. Do we have any requests to speak, Karina?
If anyone who is attending the meeting would like to speak, please raise your hand and you will be allowed to talk. I'm seeing none.
Also a reminder that public comment is available at the end of the meeting as well.
Perfect, yes. We, it looks like we don't have any public comment.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda for April 4th, please.
I put. Bruce, you're always so on top of it. This is Anna. I put force motion to approve the agenda.
This is Bruce Barr. I second it.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 My names. Motion carries. That brings us to item B1, Presentation, Discussion, and Recommendation Regarding the Tree Preservation Ordinance, Kelly Mullen.
Thank you, Madam.
Before you jump in, may I say a few words just to get us rolling today?
Absolutely, thank you.
That'd be okay. Well, to get us rolling today, I wanted to make sure that I introduce, we have a guest staff person, which is Kelly Wilsey. And I don't know, Kelly, if you can show, oh, she's waving at us for those that have video. Kelly is actually head, and please give us your official title, Kelly, because I don't want to mess it up.
Absolutely. Thanks, Councilmember Dewar. For the record, I'm Kelly Wilsey. I'm the Government Affairs and Strategic Initiatives Administrator for the City of Reno.
Okay, and as part of that job, you oversee rulemaking or ordinance development.
Yeah, long range planning, which Kelly oversees, falls into our world of policy and strategy. So we have been kind of behind the scenes and supporting this and talking about how we can support the committee as, and this initiative going forward.
Right. We're so lucky to have a large team, which it also includes JW Hodge. And he is, and Kelly, if you could come back on for a sec, just tell us his role.
Absolutely. JW is our Director of Policy and Strategy.
Okay, and he may join us for a few minutes at some point today, I understand.
Yeah, he had some conflict, so he's doing his best to kind of juggle around.
Okay, so before we get into the meat of the item, I wanted to talk about process a little. So in the few weeks that we've had since our last meeting, I've been with Kelly, with Kelly, with JW, even with Doug, just about how, what is the best way to move forward, given where we are? For the group, Kelly did a terrific presentation along with John Shipman to the Planning Commission. Just, I think that was, what, a week ago? And also attending that was our Chair, Cynthia Albright. She made public comment. I made public comment at the front end, just sort of, you know, talking about the fact that the council had voted to move forward and that we're in full support of the effort of the development, and we look forward to hearing what they had to say at the Planning Commission. And they had a lot of good comments. Unfortunately, Cynthia was there the whole time. That's not the unfortunate part, that's the fortunate part. Unfortunately, I had a conflict and I could only be there for about an hour of the two, two or so hours, two and a half hours maybe that they talked. So I did get back with the team and just talk about what is a good way to move forward based on the fact that we've got this input from Planning Commission, we're continuing to get input from the public. And it is clear to me that there's a little bit of confusion about the ordinance, you know, what it is and what it isn't. And there's a lot of thoughts that it does a lot more than I think what this commission thinks it does. And in terms of the intent, which we all know the intent, and that's what I said at my comments, was the intent is to ensure that the trees that are already being planted by many people throughout our community actually have a chance to grow up and, and mature. And whether that's with how they're planted, making sure they're not topped, making sure they're watered, just, just protecting those trees that are being planted by, whether it's city-owned or another agency or a developer. Whatever plants is taking place, the goal of this was not to change those ratios, but rather to make sure success occurred. And I think there is some confusion out in the world about what we're doing here, you know, and I think it's been a bit conflated, I think. Oh, is there? Suddenly I hear an echo.
It's been there for a while. Yeah, can we mute whoever is in charge?
Got it. I just started hearing it. But I've muted.
You want to try mute Trish or? She doesn't really have an ability to raise her hand in what she's doing, but is it echo gone?
Yep, it's gone.
Okay, so anyway, we thought, just talking amongst the staff team, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Matt Basil, Matt Brazina, this was just sort of at the higher level of the organization, the manager, the policy director level. We talked about what would be a good way to move forward at this point, you know, should we, should we pause? I mean, many times this commission has said, could we spend a little bit more time on this issue or that issue or? I'll give you an example of a question that came up the other day. Somebody said, hey, if I go to put a garage, 1,200 square foot garage on my property and there's a tree in the way, how does this ordinance affect me? And I said, well, it shouldn't affect you. I mean, yes, you're getting a building permit, but you're on private individual home. That, and it's a small addition to an existing home. I don't think you should be affected. And that was the correct answer. I think everyone on the commission would agree. I think Kelly would agree. However, I'm not sure I see that really explicitly called out in the words we've written on the page. And so maybe somebody else knows where that is, but I have not been able to find where explicitly says, you know, a building of a certain size might be exempt, let's say.
It just explicitly says, single-family homes are exempt.
Right, but it doesn't say that like a structure on a single-family home that also needs a building permit is exempt, as an example. It just, it's a question. You know, it's not as clear as it could be, maybe.
No, the garage is an accessory, an accessory to the primary, which would be the single-family dwelling. There shouldn't be any confusion with that.
Yeah, that's, I don't think there should be additional language just for a single-family home. I think it's pretty clear.
So I said it was clear to me, but that doesn't mean that other people feel it's totally clear.
No, I appreciate that. Like, it needs to be more of an educational than.
Right. So anyway, and then we have this conversation about mitigation, right? What is the right style type amount that we need to have further conversation, which we're going to have in a, in a short few minutes? So just in terms of process, we've already, we, being you, not me, because I don't vote. You have already approved Title VIII, and we were waiting for Title XVIII. And the question is just, what's the next steps? I mean, the team has plans to do some drawings, you know, to explain some exhibits, to, to help with that education, to explain where we're going, give examples of what's covered, what's not covered, and so on. So anyway, the general feeling, and, and I support this, but I wanted, this is the very first thing I wanted to talk to you about, is should we take a little bit more time to continue talking about this, to get it right? And I've, I've heard everyone on this commission say over and over, could we have a little, we want to make sure we're getting it right, right? We'd rather take a week, a month, whatever it takes, to make sure the word's on the page, because we're only going to be doing this one time. Let me ask Kelly, 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 do you have some more things that you might like to add, just sort of in the thought process?
Thanks, Councilmember Dewar. I will chime in. We have discussed, as Councilmember Dewar was mentioning, that we do think that it would be helpful to the success of this initiative to go back out and try to clarify some of the misinformation we are hearing in relation to the ordinance. And so that will take us a little bit of time as we need to kind of have some conversations about really identifying what those issues are and coming up with a strategy to get back out with the correct information. We feel like that is a really important step for us to take to make sure that everybody's included and knows what is happening with this initiative. So that would just chime, chime in on that.
Yeah, I'll give you all an example. I think it's a pretty simple example. So I serve on the lake ditch committee or lake ditch company. And we actually, we have one annual meeting a year and then some executive board meetings. So at the annual meeting, someone brought up the tree ordinance and they said, well, should we be exempt from the tree ordinance? Now, I think all of us understand there's no Title XVIII, they're not building anything, they're not building a garage, they're not building a development. They are simply maintaining their ditch in whatever way they need to. And they had heard through the grapevine that any two-inch tree that they would cut along the lake ditch, which is like 35 miles long, something like that, by the time you're all said and done, they would have to get a permit. Well, that's just plain wrong, right? We all know that. But they don't know that. And that's what they believed. And I realized, I think, you know, I'd been hearing different things that just sounded wrong, but then that one I heard and I'm thinking, why would a a lake ditch group feel that they need to be exempted or somehow have this not apply when it doesn't even apply? They're not building anything, they're not tripping a Title XVIII threshold, a building permit, nothing. So what, what are they even talking about? What's their concern? And I wasn't in a place where we could have a, you know, more in-depth conversation. We're at a board meeting with 35 people. I did set them straight. But nevertheless, if they think it, maybe somebody else thinks it too. And, and I keep hearing in the community, and I would just like, before we go further, to see what anybody else thinks or what you've experienced so far or what you're hearing. Our Chair, perhaps? Or Anna?
I'm, I'm here. I, I have not heard anything from the community, but I've certainly read the comments and I feel like there were a lot of people who were completely supportive of the direction we were taking, but at the Planning Commission Workshop comment was that there were a few commissioners that didn't support the mitigation measures. And was my understanding that staff was going to be investigating some correlation or some better correlative measures, and I don't know where we are on that point, and if we don't have them yet, then we, we have to postpone that.
Keep working.
Right, keep working. I would like Title VIII to move forward as quickly as possible, though. But I guess, I guess for everybody who is on the call, all of my fellow commissioners, I, I want this to be as, I mean, we as, we as a commission have, we worked over the holidays. We've put in, you know, three hours a night, twice a month for several months, and I would hate to lose this momentum while we wait for staff to develop these alternative mitigation measures. But I do think it's important that we have them correct. I think, you know, 90% of the language is there. But I agree with Kelly and I do agree with Councilman Dewar that there seems to be something adrift in the community that is trying to upsize this boat. And while we all have to take responsibility for trying to get the community straight in that we're, we're not, it's not a taking, so we're not, we are allowing them to cut down their trees if that's what they want to do, but we do want to try and get the message that it is really about preserving those that make sense and keeping them in the places that are the most valuable to us as a community.
Bruce has his hand up.
I can't see his hand, but go ahead, Bruce.
I would concur with what, what Cynthia said. I think that we're always going to have folks out there in the community who don't fully understand everything that's in the ordinance. I mean, I, frankly, I don't know what else is city ordinance. And if I had specific questions about something, I would certainly call the appropriate people. I know that there are going to be people who have questions. I think that we want to follow up whatever changes happen in this with a lot of good educational inform, informative type meetings that help people understand what, what we're getting at. But you're constantly going to have people moving into town, don't realize what the rules are. They're going to call with questions. That's, you know, that's just the nature of the beast, but I, I think that we were getting real close to where we wanted to be on the tree preservation and hopefully we can, we can get it worked around there. I know as Chairman Albright mentioned, that we had some, some consternation about the mitigation and where that was, but I, I don't think it's, it's an unsolvable problem. But I, I agree. I mean, I feel phone calls in my day job all the time about people who just completely don't have a clue as to what, what requires a permit, what doesn't require a permit, what they can do, what they need to do. And, you know, it's, it's, it's an ongoing educational process for folks, but once you kind of get the bulk of the community in, into it and understanding it, it sort of begins to self-regulate itself, I would think. You're going to get a lot of voluntary compliance, and that's where, that's really what, what the goal is, I believe, is, you know, just to get voluntary compliance on these things.
Well, I think you bring up a good point, Bruce, which is, at the end of the day, we just want people to be successful. They're making an investment, a very significant investment, as part of building their projects. And what we don't want them to have to do is go back and replace those investments they made just three years ago because they, the sprinklers got turned off for five years from now because a new owner bought the building and cut down all the trees and we're back at ground zero. I think that is the significant basket of things we're trying to address. So.
Yeah, and thank you, everyone. This is Anna. Yeah, I haven't either, like Cynthia said, received comments from the public about this. I've just read the comments that have been, and like she mentioned, the majority of comments are overwhelmingly positive, wanting us to even go stronger on our ordinances. So I really do think it's an education and there will always be very vocal people that we can't sway. And that's just a reality that we have to deal with, as long as we present a very good case and get a majority of people and organizations on board and it's solid. And I agree with Commissioners Barr and Chair Albright that not, we don't agree with the mitigation measures at this moment, especially with it involving increased infrastructure for tree preservation. We just don't know. I mean, we know that any kind of infrastructure increases the urban heating in Reno, and so we just don't have a clear picture to move this ordinance forward at this time. But I think we've made great progress and I think we're very close. And I appreciate everyone that's here on the call tonight.
Right, so I don't know, it has to be a very long pause. I mean, what I'm wondering about is just getting the exhibits drawn up and maybe putting on some additional educational forums about what it is and what it isn't. So that either people say it's too much or not enough, when we know that what the goal is, is just make these trees grow, right? The ones that we're already requiring, let them live.
I think another portion, I'm sorry, Naomi, to cut in, is something that I'd really like to have done, and I think it can be done soon. I shouldn't say for sure, but the updated canopy study, that is a comment I've been seeing over and over again, and if we can show the canopy is still shrinking, I mean, the support will be through the roof for this, so. I know the data is already there, and so.
Anna, when is that updated canopy study?
That's what I don't know, and I, yeah, I called the GIS specialist about it a couple of weeks ago and I just haven't connected with him. He's really busy with his other things right now. But he told me the data's there, and so I'm wondering, what's up?
They've flown it and they've collected the data?
It didn't need to be flown like the last time. They're using satellite imagery and map because it's stand-up. I'm sure he has more info than I do.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Anna. So I'm actually meeting with the state community and urban forestry person tomorrow. So I've been working with her for the past few months about a plan to do a canopy study for all of the communities in Nevada. And I talked with her last week about, you know, how we've received a lot of comments about our code update, about and how an updated canopy study would help to guide that. So we decided, or she decided to expedite Reno's canopy study. So we're, we're meeting again tomorrow to go over the finals of you know, what the scope and what products as far as, you know, research products we should receive in a canopy study tomorrow. And then Kelly and I will, will review those. uh, you know, research products we should receive of, in a canopy study tomorrow, and then Kelly and I will, will review those uh, those specifications before, before we proceed with doing that analysis. So, so we are expediting the canopy study. And, you know, it, it may make sense to, you know, to try and get that canopy study in our, in our hands to support the ordinance moving forward.
I think that's a great point, and Matt, did they give you a timeframe? Just like, is this a month-long effort, a year-long effort? I mean, do you have a sense of it?
No, um, based on the, um, the discussions that we had with a couple of the, the contractors who do the actual study, it sounded like, uh, probably a couple of months.
That's the thing, though, Matt. I don't know if we need to go through these contractors, so I'd like to be in discussions with this with the GIS specialist. Because like I said, when I talked with him months ago, he said the data's already there, so.
Yes, and, and.
The contractors that do the analysis, that may take a couple of months, but.
So in the short term, um, so I've been working with our IT department to download the, the canopy analysis programs that, that I, basically the same programs that they would be using, so that I can do them from my computer here. So we'll have some preliminary data, but it's very, it's kind of a rough data set, whereas the the goal of the actual canopy study is more of a polished product to identify a lot of the the intricacies of what we're looking to, to learn about. So in, in the meantime, I should be able to come up with you know, an updated overall canopy study of Reno, which I'm, I'm working on that now, but, but to have a really polished product that that, that has, you know, that includes some recommendations of, of how to increase our canopy and where our canopy is and, and all those kind of metrics. You know, we do want to wait until we have a, uh, that.
Yeah, I think just having a canopy percentage right now for this, what we need, I think that's the biggest thing, is people are saying our canopy's not decreasing. So why are we pushing so hard? So I understand the need for a very detailed analysis, but I think just getting the rough, dirty numbers to present along with our changes would go a long way. And sorry, Kelly, is it Kelly?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Anna. Um, I was just going to time in, I, I, I think the group has identified several of the key uh, or some of the things we've also been talking about internally. Um, but the group has also mentioned, um, uh, you guys are in a good flow on this, and we still think that those conversations should be occurring right now. So to continue the conversation today around mitigation, and that might take some additional time, so. Um, uh, what we're just kind of saying is what we're recommending today is the specific timeline that we have been talking about in terms of a recommendation final today, planning commission final at the end of this month. We are recommending kind of giving some more leeway to make sure that we can work through those issues. Uh, but, uh, would hope that these conversations continue, um, with you guys as, as we're going.
You know, that really does help explain it, Kelly, better than, than I probably did. Which is, you're just talking about adding some breathing room to allow the issues to get fully developed, whether it's the mitigation answer or the canopy question, um, or a couple exhibits. It's just you're not ready to present a final to the planning commission until we have this information, is what I'm hearing you say.
Yes.
Okay. And Cynthia and Matt both have hands up.
If I may, please.
You're the chair, Cynthia. You get to call on anyone.
Okay, um, Kelly, I guess, I would appreciate it, um, since our commission has worked so hard uh, to accommodate Kelly's pretty aggressive schedule that was set out at the beginning of this update. She was keen on getting this, um, moved forward and we accommodated that schedule. And, and I would appreciate it as the chair and anybody else who would be of interest. Um, you know, when, when staff is collaborating internally and or externally to come up with um, ideas on how to mitigate or language changes that are significant, like the mitigation measures that were proposed, I would appreciate the courtesy of being involved in that discussion or those discussions or just being made aware that those types of, um, ideas are being bandied about. Um, you know, so we can save ourselves a whole lot of time, um, rather than waiting to see it on a draft and see it go to the planning commission as a workshop item. Um, you know, at, at our core, we all instinctively knew it didn't feel right, and it didn't feel right to the planning commission, um, at least several members, and so we, we could have avoided all of that if we had had a conversation before it moved forward. Um, and so Kelly, I would just like to throw it out there that I would appreciate going forward. You know, to, to be part of that discussion.
Thanks, Cynthia, for that feedback.
You're also saying, Cynthia, like to vet these things a little more, maybe the concept pieces before we get all the things written? Is that what you're also saying?
Correct, yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay.
I, I just think they were, they were so different than, I, what, you know, we had mitigation measures in there and they were just completely different than what we had talked about as a commission. And Kelly and, and Kelly and staff and Matt, I mean, we've all been working together very carefully. And I think we all felt pretty surprised to see those come in, sort of had a feeling of coming from the field. Um, and not that they weren't articulated by hundreds of people in the community, I don't know. But it just would have been nice to have, you know, had a discussion about that before it was on paper.
You know, one idea that I kicked around with Kelly and others was just, so several people have said they read the comments. And I think one of the challenges is in reading the comments, but then knowing what direction to go in. For example, you brought up, Anna, that several of the comments were that we weren't, we didn't go strong enough. You know, we, the group, the editorial we. How, how was that integrated? Did we strengthen something in response, you know? Or did we as a collective say, well, we think we're just at the right, we're not too much and not too little? Is that an example, Anna?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I really thought that, I felt like there was a couple of different comments that were given severe or really weight, you know, versus the positive comments that weren't even incorporated. Um, it was just, and I feel that's something we need to, you know, it's a fine line because the negative people can be very loud. But we shouldn't be incorporating all the negative language into the new ordinance. And so, yeah, I don't think there's a very robust, um, examination of the comments at all. I feel like it was very hit or miss based on what someone perceived the severity of that comment to be.
So would it help? I mean, we're, we're talking about a couple of things. We're talking about mitigation. We're talking about education. We're talking about some diagrams, so we're all sort of speaking from the same cloth. We're talking about a, addressing some misunderstandings, like for example, the lake ditch example I gave you, which I don't think they would mind. I mean, it was in front of forty people, so why not? Um, so that we say, wow, they didn't get it. Maybe they didn't read it, which is very likely. But if they did read it, maybe they didn't understand it to mean what, what you just explained. And so it might be, so it's some improved language, some further discussion of mitigation, some, but um, some diagrams to speak from that we all agree, get the point across. And then there might be one more thing, I think, and that might be a discussion of the comments. Um, and, and just as a group, um, you know, do they need to be addressed in some way in this draft? You know, or did, or did they, we, it's always a fine line call, right? Do we hit the right mark? Do we need to move a little, uh, up or down sideways to kind of be a little bit more all-encompassing? Those are always judgment calls that we're really, you know, our staff are pretty good at, but they certainly, the reason you're all here is you have the experience, you, you are doing these jobs on a daily basis, and you have the ability. Um, you know where you want to recommend that the city goes, right?
So I do have a suggestion with other public comment documents I've seen mostly for the feds is they have a breakdown percentages, positive versus negative. And then maybe an example, and that's what they put back out to the public, like this is a review of the public comments. Does the city of Reno have any process like that?
We'll lean on Kelly and call Kelly.
Thank you, thank you for the, the question. I think that's an interesting, um, idea too, in terms of the summary and, and certainly in terms of process and where we've seen that before. I know that sometimes at council, in terms of the comments that they receive for the agenda items, that sometimes they will be summarized in that way in terms of, you know, con, number of comments received in support or with concerns or, or neutral, that kind of a summary. Um, so that's, that's certainly one area where we have seen that. Um, we did not provide that for the, for the tree ordinance. But that is certainly something that we could take a look at as well.
I would like that to be presented when we do push this ordinance forward to the city council. I would like those statistics provided, if possible.
Thank you for that suggestion. I'm noting that down.
Cynthia, you have your hand up again.
Oh, we do? I'm sorry, I didn't lower, apologies.
What do you think, Kelly? I mean, um, another way I've seen it done too, in addition to what Anna just mentioned, where you have, you know, um, you might have it broken down into, let's say, five topics. And there might be comments pro and con on a topic, you know, where people say, uh, I'll just pick mitigation. People liked it, they didn't like it, it went far enough, it didn't go far enough, but then sometimes there's also a sort of a, a statement of where, what direction we're going in, you know, what, how we've kind of processed that input and where we're going. And I know I did that on the state water plan, you know, we got hundreds of comments from all over the state. And I, I broke it down, um, so you could sort the comments by topic, by agency, by result. You know, yes, no, we're going to do that, we're not going to do that, that, or we do that later, you know, some kind of disposition of the idea. You know, and then they know how their comment was received or dealt with, you know, so.
And I, I think will be useful for our conversation today too, because I know that we want to get into some of the, you know, the meat of, of recommendations as well as as part of the discussion today and, um, you know, if we get consensus from the, the commission in terms of, um, you know, input that they have, feedback that they'd like to provide, I think those are all things that we can we can note down. That's going to just help the conversation as we move forward through the next steps in the process. And so that's what I would, uh, would offer at this point. Definitely want to hear all the input and feedback, feedback that the commission has this evening.
Well, I, I, I think going forward, Kelly, um, obviously when you went out to the community, I participated in all of the uh, NAV meetings. I listened to every single one. And I never heard anybody talk about any of the mitigation measures that were, that appeared in the draft. So I don't, I don't even know where they came from. Um, I don't know how they came about. Um, and just like Anna said, it would be helpful to have a summary of the comments that were received, both positive and negative, and maybe even categorized. Um, maybe we need a survey. Uh, you know, maybe part of this process needs to have a survey that goes out to the community where we ask specific questions, because we are not trying to put anybody in a situation that causes them more financial harm or anything like that. Like Councilman Mendor said, we, we want to protect the investments that, that the community is making, both private and public. And, and I think that we need more information from the community, and we definitely need more information from the data to help support the, the direction that we're taking. And, and I do have a co, a question for Anna and for Matt, and that is, you know, when, when Matt, when I worked with, uh, the air quality management district and NASA to do an urban heat island study of northern Nevada, we used the county's aerial four-inch imagery. So I'm just curious if or why we're not going to use that data for purposes of the canopy study, since it's so much more accurate than anything that you would get from the NASA satellites.
Yeah, I'm not a GIS expert, but the guy that works at NDF, he's a guru, so that's what I was saying. I mean, he says the data is available, so I don't know what data he's pulling. Um, but it'd be good, Matt, to have him in that conversation with Kayanne as well, because Kayanne's got the funds for it, but this guy's got the wizardry, like definitely bring him on board. He could potentially have this, you know, information to us ASAP.
Anna, could you share his contact information with me? I don't know that person.
Yeah, I'll email it to you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I would love to have it too, Anna, just for brings and giggles, but um, I do know that the county flies at four-inch resolution all of the tricky matters every other year. Um, and so I, I would just want to ask the question for, I think you're right, I think we need to get, you know, some quick and dirty statistics, um, to have an understanding of where we are. But if we're really going to invest the time and come up with, um, some quality baseline metrics, if we have access, which we could, if we have access to the four-inch resolution imagery, that would be best if, if we are going to do that study. And even if it's, you know, a year old or two years old, it's better than imagery from the NASA satellites. But if, just, I would just like somebody to ask the GIS guru.
Yeah, so it sounds like we're going to all talk about this, Matt. I'll talk with you and Kayanne and Erin about this this week. And hopefully have an answer to you guys that we can send out through the, our UFC, um, here soon.
Perfect, thank you.
Kelly, you have your hand up. Well, and Kelly did too, but you took it down, so. I don't know which one wants to go first.
Kelly, go ahead.
I was just going to say, thank you guys for the input. I, um, I have to jump off in ten minutes, but I know the conversation ongoing. I know Kelly and Matt have prepared a conversation to, or a presentation to keep this conversation going. Uh, appreciate everything you guys said tonight, uh, but just, uh, wanted to say thank you and, uh, looking forward to keep working with y'all.
Well, Kelly, what's inspirational is that the whole, we have a whole team backing Kelly at the city. You know, in a variety of departments. She's just the tip of the spear. I mean, but there's a lot of bench depth here and a lot of support. Um, and, you know, throughout the city, so I think that, um, you know, we can get the pieces that we need to kind of get back to the planning commission, you know, with some methodical steps here. Okay, thank you, Kelly.
And so what I was, uh, what I was going to add also, um, that we do have that presentation, um, prepared, we were going to talk through this evening, um, some of the, the results of the research that Urban Forestry Commission had asked for last time. Matt's going to speak to that a little bit this evening, and we want to talk through, um, some of the, I think, upcoming opportunities as well. Um, and just as, you know, kind of going along with the, the conversation, um, as mentioned earlier, that that timeline that we had initially been contemplating is going to shift some um, in terms of what it will exactly look like. We will make sure to keep the Urban Forestry Commission updated as we know more. Um, but, uh, this evening, we're going to be, you know, presenting the results of that, that research that was done and then looking to get any additional input that, that this commission may have either on that research or on the title, um, the Title 18 proposed changes and/or the process. I'm happy to hear and, and collect all of that input from the, the commission this evening.
And Kelly, I had one comment on that. I heard it a cup, echoed here a couple of times. So when you get back with your team with Kelly, JW, et cetera, can you talk to them about where, where we stand with Title Eight? Because it seems fairly non-controversial to anyone. Um, you know, it's the soil quality, it's the soil composition, at least the last time I saw it, the mound. Uh, it's about public trees, you know, there's a number of things there that are kind of meat and potatoes, you know, basic stuff. And, uh, you know, I, I know that you, you could take one and take the other, do a phase one, phase two. As, I think the biggest concern months ago from the commission is that you do a phase one, Title Eight, but Title 18 would never ever cross the finish line. But I don't think that's the case anymore. I think there's a, a huge commitment to, to getting this done, and so it's something when you are back in the office to talk about is just, I'm just hearing this, you know, from the commissioners. Is, is there an appetite to go forward with piece one? So just think, think that through too.
Absolutely, yeah. We'll have that conversation and, and certainly would welcome input from the commission, if there is any on that front as well. And if there are other, um, comments or questions that the, the group would like to get into before the presentation, we can do that. Otherwise, I'll go ahead and, and share my screen and we can start talking about the the results of the research. The results of the research.
I think that sounds great, Kelly, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you all, look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right, and it looks like I will need to be granted access to share the screen. All right, I'll go ahead and try that now. Okay, and is everyone able to see that PowerPoint?
Yes, we are.
Perfect, and I'm getting a little bit of background noise, I'm wondering if. I'm not hearing it anymore, so it may have been.
Um, maybe you can mute everybody for the moment.
I see everyone muted, okay. Matt, do you need the ability to speak? Are you presenting?
Uh, yes, you know, I'll mute myself in between.
Okay, perfect.
All right, so thank you all again for for joining us to talk about the tree ordinance. Another another time, and we have some good information to present to the commission. This evening, I'm gonna go ahead and break up the agenda really quickly. So what we're gonna do is just do a brief recap of that conversation that we had with Urban Forestry a couple of weeks ago. Some of those high points that came out of that discussion, and then we'll get into the meat of the presentation, which is really just talking about the. The results of that research that has been completed by staff in the last couple of weeks. And then opening it up for the commissions to discuss all of those things further and provide additional input. So again, just in terms of the the recap, you know, any time that we look at a code amendment, when we're talking about changing something within the Reno municipal code. We always make sure to go back to the goals, of course, of the project itself, what are the objectives, what are we trying to get at? With that code amendment, making sure that we're hitting those items and staying within scope. But then also looking at just the overall policies of the city, you know, this is not, I know new information, this is something that we talked a little bit about. About at our last meeting, but I just want to bring back to the forefront of, you know, we always make sure that those amendments are are. Are taking into consideration the policies that are adopted by the city, whether it's, you know, out of our strategic plan or the Reno master plan, keeping those in mind. And then, of course, with any amendment, we always want to make sure that any new regulations that are put into place. Are something that we do have the ability to administer those code provisions and enforce them. And as always, making sure that any new code language is something that is legally defensible, that we have considered our responsibilities on that front. And then in terms of kind of the takeaways from that conversation with Urban Forestry on March 16th. And we certainly heard loud and clear from many of the the members. Concern about some of the incentives that were being proposed, you know, I think there was a. Kind of a wide range of comments related to that, where different members had comments about different incentives. But certainly that question was raised about the appropriateness of hardscape incentives. In in exchange for preserving trees and and certainly think the loudest there. In in terms of response was related to those wall articulation incentives, so I expect that that's something that. We'll get additional comments from the 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 commission on and make potential additional discussion this evening on that as well. And certainly, just like it was echoed today, concern about that, the removal. Of the mitigation requirements that have been proposed in that December draft. And exchanging those with incentives, and you know, certainly the biggest driver of that change. Was that concern over legal liabilities and legal responsibilities. With the the current case law that's coming through. With significant conversations and analysis with our city attorney's office, that that was the primary driver. For those, that change in terms of shifting from mitigation requirements to incentives. And then, you know, that request, I think the biggest request that came out of that meeting from Urban Forestry last time. Was asking for staff to complete additional research on the environmental benefits of individual trees. And so with that, what I would like to do now is hand it over to Matt Basil, and he's gonna speak about the results of that research and how it was completed.
Thank you, Kelly. So. So I spoke with the with the US Forest Service, who maintains the. These different programs to analyze the benefits of of trees, and they kind of recommended. The different programs to use, so I I used iTree Design. To assess the environmental benefits of various trees, so I selected. A few different species within each different canopy size class and then. You know, and then ran the the analysis to determine. You know, the benefits that are provided by the individual trees. The issue I found is that. You could have. A two different species of trees that are the same exact size, but the benefits calculated for the individual trees. Varied quite a bit. And, you know, so so I think that there's. There's different algorithm, algorithms and things built into that program for, you know, that are very species specific. As far as what the benefits are provided by the individual tree. And as a result of that, it makes it makes those numbers very difficult to come up with. It makes it very difficult to generalize what the benefits are based on. Canopy size for a given tree. And, you know, one of the issues with that is is that to really do a thorough job, every single project would have to do. An in-depth analysis of every single tree on that parcel to determine what the benefits are, and then. It it also, because the benefits aren't. You know, they're not directly proportional to different species, it makes it really difficult to come up with. An adequate mitigation to the trees that are being removed. So it's, it it becomes very cumbersome to do the analysis, and then. You know, at the end of the day, we don't know if it's worth. The, you know, the the extra effort to do that analysis, and we don't know that it's defensible. To to use the data that comes out of that analysis to come up with an, with a reasonable equitable. Mitigation for the trees being removed. So. And I don't. I think in the the following slide. Kelly has a chart of just an example of some of the different analysis that we did. But if you want to go back, Kelly, we'll just finish that one slide. So, so overall, you know, are. Kind of a hypothesis that the larger trees do provide greater benefits, you know, that. That shows to be true, and they, as the trees get bigger, there there's a, you know, there there's a direct trend of. Increasing benefits with larger canopies. But the, you know, I think in order to 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 really have a defensible. You know, methodology of of. Of calculating those benefits, you need an extremely large data set. And, you know, this, how to. Go over the the statistics and everything is just is, we're just not quite there yet, so if you want to go to the next. Slide. Kelly, you can see, so here's this, this is just kind of a snapshot of a few different trees that, you know, that I put into this calculator. And. Like, so. You know, for example, you have a 15 inch Southern Catalpa and a 15 inch. Black Maple, so the same sized tree, but then if you look at the carbon dioxide that those trees have stored. The the Black Maple, which is the same exact size, is stored more than. Two times the amount of carbon dioxide, so that's that's accounting for the the root mass. In the soil, the trunk, the leaves, you know, all those different metrics that are very specific to that exact tree. So it's, it it makes it really difficult to come up with a generalized strategy. To apply towards all trees based on diameter alone. You know, so. And then if you look at, so we'll look at like the Siberian elm and a London plane tree. You know, again, there's. If we look at the air quality, so the the pounds of pollution removed from the air, so. You know, that's different, different volatile organic compounds that are in the air that the trees are able to sequester. You know, you could see there's, there's a, you know, almost a third difference in the amount. That London plane tree removed compared to an elm, so. There's just a lot of variability in that data that we're not super comfortable moving forward with. You know, making regulatory. Taking a regulatory position on utilizing canopy as a as a metric.
So Matt, I have a question. Yeah.
Yes.
Let's ask, can we ask a couple of questions, so. I'll just say this, it almost sounds kind of perfect, because to Jonathan's point. It should be very specific that there shouldn't be generalized. Rules is what I was hearing him say, that there should be a site-specific analysis. So you understand what, you know, this, this that you're showing kind of speaks to his issue, which was. You know, different trees are gonna provide different benefits and they should be mitigated, you know, the, not just across the board on a tree trunk size, but something else. So I'll leave it there and go to Anna.
Oh, yeah, my question was just gonna be how, what other metric are you proposing besides? Because I know we weren't looking at species, you know, we were looking at diameter and number of trees, so what other metric are you proposing?
Sure, and and we'll move on to kind of where we're moving. Which is still kind of organic, kind of where we're going, but if I could just address Councilmember Dora's comment about. You know, the mid, the custom mitigation towards the individual trees, you know, one of the issues that that we found with that is that. You, it's very difficult to calculate the. The the contribution of the. New trees that are planned to be planted. And. You know, because they're so small at planting, you. You generally need, you know, exponentially more trees in order to. Mitigate for whatever the removal is of the the proposed tree removal.
So just running an example, the 25 inch London plane tree, you're saying to get the same amount of pounds or. Air quality on this same day, right? You might need many, many. So I think we've been talking about this, that there's a a range of ages. A 25 inch London plane tree is obviously quite mature. As compared to a young tree that's only three years old that you're planting or two years old that you're planting. So. Is that what you're basically saying, is it's hard to compare a mature tree to a bunch of small trees?
It it is, and and specifically, one of the comments from our our legal counsel is that. The 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 replacement trees should be, we shouldn't be looking at them. Kelly, maybe you can help me with exactly how how Jonathan phrased that, but we shouldn't be looking at. The trees based on a certain stage of their life, we should be looking at the expected benefits of the tree over over its lifespan.
I think that was the comment that. I think that was the comment that all trees should be based off the mature expected size. And so whether it's a mature tree coming out or a young tree going in, they're both the same size, I think that was the basis of the comment, but I see Bruce has his hand up as well.
Bruce, do you wanna?
Yeah, well, the thing I'm kind of struggling with here, Matt, is is so you're suggesting that you can't mitigate. The loss of a tree unless you can. Absolutely, through data, determine that that specific tree and that specific species. Put on this much. Had this much benefit. We're we're not even asking. In the mitigation to match. The benefit of that tree, we're just saying if you plant three trees. For a tree that's over six inches, that's a pretty weak. Negation, I I mean, I I don't think any of your data would would not support that mitigation, so. I I'm struggling to see what the point is here.
This is just, this analysis was done based on, you know, suggestions that we got from from the commission. As a group last time we met. Was to look more more in-depth at the individual trees.
I think the, where that came from was my question was, if you're gonna allow a replacement credit or a, you know, preservation credit, if. Someone preserves two. Little crab apple trees, does that go towards so many credits, you know, where we would prefer to have. Larger trees, and so that, I think that's where that came from, was this question of the smaller versus larger.
And the environmental, and the environmental credit that.
Correct.
Being or losing one or the other, and I guess my comment to that, Matt. Is, you know, I don't know about you, but we rarely see trees. In our lifetime that grow to maturity in our environment, because the harshness of the environment, because the. Irrigation system never gets moved, because the water generally isn't what it should be. And so I would not necessarily think we would want to. Establish our criteria based on a maturity level. When our environment isn't conducive for trees to reach their maturity, and I think the trees that. Landscape architect planted on Virginia Street outside of the Eldorado 26 years ago is a perfect example. Of how trees don't reach maturity unless they're really cared for by private property owners. It's, it seems we should all agree on on us, is it 20 years, is it 15 years, is it 25 years, but. Maturity just doesn't seem a realistic comparison to me.
Sure, and then, so if we could maybe move to the next slide, I I think that'll that'll kind of help to deal with with some of the concerns here, so. So based on that, that analysis of the benefits provided by individual trees. Which we found to to vary greatly and and was kind of difficult to figure out how how exactly those. Those benefits were, you know, calculated for different species, we started to look at. What is the the square footage of various trees in the landscape to try and come up with? You know, what's the expected canopy coverage of a given tree species at maturity? And maturity is difficult to describe in the terms of, you know, years or size. You know, because different trees have different different life cycles, and then as Commissioner Albright brought up, there's, you know, certain, a lot of trees don't, they're not going to meet. The expected, we can't use the expected size for a tree. From anywhere else, because it's very specific to Reno in the, you know, the challenging climate and environment that we have for trees, so. So one thing we're doing right now, and we're not at a point where, you know, this could be used for. You know, recommending any regulatory action, but but we've started collecting. The square footage of various trees that we have in our tree inventory, so. Just as an example, the first tree on this. This chart here is a is a tulip tree, so.
Are these all canopy size four and above?
This particular graph is showing all canapes that are currently listed as canopy size four or.
Thank you.
So, so for example, the tulip tree. We took, we found six different tulip trees that are in our inventory, and then we used. GIS tools to 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 measure the the square footage of the that tree's canopy. And then you could see the site IDs column, we we preface that with an S for a street tree or a P for park tree, and that's to. Acknowledge the fact that the trees in a park setting, you know, they have unlimited soil volume, they have consistent irrigation, so we expect those trees to grow bigger. So as far as what is our overall expectation for a tulip tree to grow, we're making sure to to incorporate. You know, not only trees that are that are really well cared for, but trees that are in a more challenging environment such as along the street. So that's, that's kind of how we started out our analysis. And then you can see, out of those six trees, the average square foot for a tulip tree was 926 square feet. And, you know, just as an example of. Of why it's it's difficult to use that data at this point, you know, using the mean average. Of square footage, if you look at a London plane tree, you know, those are really one of the largest trees that 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 grow around here. And, you know, the average was was 4,000 square feet, so that's four times the size of a tulip tree, even though they're both. Classified as. Canopy size class four trees, and when, sorry, if I could just finish, the. When when creating that. When, when creating that list of canopy sized classes, I considered making a canopy sized class five tree for the really large trees, but then. You, you, there would only be like two or three trees in that list. So, so I kind of decided to keep them all grouped together as class four trees. Um, you know, in order to. Help encourage more diversity in the trees that we're planting. But overall, so the overall average of the, the, the different. Um, you know, forty-some, fifty trees that we've looked at so far was about fif- fifteen hundred. And fifty square foot of coverage. Which I think is great. And you can see that the overall canopy size. Of between a class two, three and four tree, you can see that it, you know, the canopy size overall is, is, is. Is what we would expect. It's much larger for a canopy sized for a tree. Which supports what we have written in code so far to encourage the planting of those larger canopy sized class trees. But. At this point, just given the variability of the data that, that we've randomly selected. We're, we're just, you know, I think we need a lot. A, a lot larger data set before we're really comfortable moving forward with a recommendation of. Of, uh, uh, in any direction. Of using this kind of data to, to quantify. Um, canopy sized classes. So I think at this point, it, it, it helps to support what we have. In the proposed code. Um, saying that, you know, that we want to encourage the planting of these larger canopy sized class trees because. You know, we're, we're able to quantify that they do have larger canopy. Uh, but we're just not at a, we need to do a lot more data analysis and. And statistical, you know, random selection and everything to really. Um, before we're able to come up with numbers that are, that we're comfortable to use for regulatory purposes. We just don't think that it's defensible yet at this point.
And, and, and Matt, I want to thank you and, and everybody. If, if you had support or not, I, I think this is wonderful. I think you're absolutely right. I think we need to. Look into this in a much broader and greater detail. Um, I think we should probably be using median and not averages. I definitely think we want to separate out. Parks from everywhere else, you know, streets. Parkways, parking lots, et cetera, et cetera. I think a comparison between. Those, those species that are the same in these various places is important. Because that demonstrates how the volume. The soil volume and certainly pub park, trees in parks probably get a lot more care and love than they do in. You know, parkways, because parkways are difficult. Um, I think it, I think this is really where we need to go, which is, you know, down this path of. Of data collection and analysis to support the recommendations that we as a body. Are trying to put forth and we need to demonstrate that there is legitimate value. And, and requiring larger sized trees for the environmental benefits that they bring. And this is data that a lot of people probably don't realize. Uh, exists. And the values of trees and the quantity of, you know, carbon sequestration, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, this is information I think the public would be very much interested in and would help support. Why the urban forestry commission wants to go in the direction it's proposing.
Thank you. And, and I think, you know, if we look back at this, the previous slide. Where we've quantified the benefits of some of those different trees. I, I think if anything, those numbers. Again, support why it's important for us to, to plant. And, and ensure the care of larger trees because it's, you know, there's, we can quantify. That the larger canopy trees. Provide these exponentially more environmental benefits that we're receiving as a community. Um, we just, we just don't think that this is a tool. Um, you know, to be used as a comparison, you know, of this tree to that tree and then, you know, making regulatory. Uh, decisions based on, you know, this or that, you know, I think if anything, it's really a tool to show. Um, it, it's an educational tool to, to show that the larger trees. Are, are better. They provide more benefits and, and we. We should be working to, to try and have. Uh, more of the, the larger canopy trees. You know, one large canopy tree is better than a couple. You know, small.
Bears.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, um, so I think, I really think we're moving in the right direction here of. Uh, you know, encouraging larger trees and then ensuring that they're installed properly and ensuring that. Um, that they're cared for properly so that we can. Um, so that we'll be able to see the benefits of these larger canopies as they grow in the landscape. Um, but I do agree that we need to do. A, a, a little bit more work at, at this point, based on just, we've made a lot of different changes and strategies of, of how we want to address these and.
So, so what I'm hearing, Matt, is that you think we away with the tree preservation code altogether? Because we can't regulatory back it up. That's what I'm hearing.
I'm saying that, that I, I'm not at a point where I'm comfortable. Using this data as, uh, in a regulatory fashion because I, I just, I think that there needs to be a lot more research done. And you, you know, I. Um, I, I didn't enjoy statistics when I was in school. I, I, you know, I think that there needs to be a, a little bit more. Analysis from, uh, you, you mathematically to, to, to show. Um, make sure that we, that the data we have is defensible before. We're going to make regulatory decisions, you know, based on.
I think that's possible.
Right now, Matt, in, in the citizen, let's go, if you want to cut down a tree, it's going to cost you three grand.
He, he, and that's.
And you're gonna have to replace the tree.
Right. And, and, and to keep in mind, Bruce, we still have those. Those protections in chapter eight for, for the, the, the city, you know, trees that exist in the city right.
No, I'm not talking to city, I'm talking in your backyard.
Well, and that's, and, and you know, I think that we've explored the. You know, how we can, we can have regulations like that and, and, and maybe Jonathan can.
Not even talking about regulations like that. We don't want regulations like that. We're talking about telling somebody that if you have a large tree on your property that you're wanting to develop. And it's in the footprint of that project, you can remove it, but you're gonna have to mitigate the removal of that tree. You're gonna have to plant some more trees somewhere else on your property or some other property. I don't see where that's an issue. I don't see, we're not taking anything, we're giving them an option. But I, I mean. Uh, otherwise, we're just saying there's no tree preservation there. I mean, to say, we really want you to keep these trees, but we're not going to do anything about it. I, I, I just don't understand the concept. It's, it's like we've been working for months on this. And. We're, we're back to where we started.
Well, let me jump in here. Let me ask Matt a question. Matt, you said it's gonna take some more work, but you have twenty-five thousand trees approximately. In your database and public spaces. And if we separated out park trees. Which have a different environment than every other tree, including on developed properties on streets, et cetera. And we just looked at the streets and we did do statistics. I, I was good in statistics and it sounds like. Uh, Cynthia has other people or knowledge as well. About, for example, the median versus the mean and so on. That it, it, I, when you say a lot, that's, we're not sure what you mean by a lot. Like, for example, could you continue your analysis? Drop out the park trees. Use a median, do the statistical analysis. And come up with a answer in a month or two. I mean, that's, I, I, I don't think it's an all or nothing with Bruce is saying. You're wanting to drop it. I think you're asking for a little time to develop it.
Yes, thank you for that. And. And, and I agree, and I, and I think, um, you, you know, from, from my perspective. I could probably use a little help as far, as far as like you brought up, just the actual. Um, what's the best way to collect that data and then do that analysis and then, um, you know, come up with a. You know, a product that's really defensible. Uh, but as far, and then as far as the, you know, the. Preservation of trees on the private property. I, I wonder if, if Jonathan Shipman might be able to kind of address. Um, Bruce's comments there.
I think that would be great if Jonathan could, because. I know that Bruce's comment is something that's sort of been tickling me in the back of my mind. It's like we. We had a mitigation plan. We, we had an approach in the document. We, we basically said, if you want to cut it down, cut it down, that's fine. But if, if you're gonna cut it down, then you're gonna have to pay for it or plant more trees elsewhere. And so I would love to hear. Directly. A response from our district attorney, Mr. Shipman, you know. To that question that Bruce has raised because it's, it's certainly something I don't quite understand either.
Sure, um, can you hear me? Is this?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, um, and, and we've kind of talked about this in the past. I think there's a lot of communities out. In, across the United States that have. I would call tree ordinances that were put in place in the seventies, the eighties and the nineties. And some of the challenge has been, you know, these are communities that have already internalized a lot of this tree. Um, you know, the fact that trees are part of the, um, what the community values. And you know, there's, there's interest in preserving trees, especially up, you know, like Tahoe, prime example. Um, and, and you know, that's, that's a certain. Community with a certain community value, you're probably not going to get a lot of pushback on a lot of that stuff. There are certain communities that are seeing that now. Um, where, you know, the, the costs for some of these things are being questioned about whether, um, the governments can do this or not. Um, the, the concern is if there's a tree that's on somebody's property. And it wasn't required, it wasn't, it, it, it is not. They have to preserve that tree and they come and they want to. Build on that property and they want to take that tree down. You know, the, the issue is, you know, can they cut that tree and then file an application and get out of? The mitigation requirement. And the issue is that, you know, unless you have an ability to stop somebody from cutting that tree down before they apply. I don't see what the mechanism is. Other than, you know, some sort of, you know, incentive to get them to keep that tree. Um, I mean, and I'm open if people have got models for this and I, and again, I, I, I'm, I'm not. The, 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 what I'm looking at is Nolan and Dolan. So you have to have a nexus. Between what you're trying to do and what I think you've heard tonight is from Matt and, um, Kelly is that. Look, we're focusing more on canopy now. Um, and so, which is great. Um, that also was a comment that came out of the planning commission. Um, so now that we know what we're looking at is canopy, now the question is. Okay, so if, if we're trying to protect canopy. Then how can we make sure that what we're asking for is reasonably proportionate to what? Um, needs to happen. And so that's, that's the question. So if they have a tree and it's a baseline and it has a certain canopy size. Um, yeah, we can ask for them to try to replace that canopy size. Um, where you get into. You know, some difficulties is if you, if you go over broad, you know, so if we're asking people to plant. Ten trees for everyone taken down, when we know that those trees, when they hit maturity are going to produce ten times the amount. Of canopy. That would have been produced by that tree that was currently on property. You potentially got a proportionality problem there because you're asking for. Ten times of what was existing or is, is existing and the public over time gets the same benefit. Namely a tree or multiple trees. So I mean, we're, we're. Part of the challenge here is trying to figure out exactly what. What, what we're aiming for, what this commission is aiming for in terms of benefits. Are we talking about? Canopy size in diminishing the heat. Signature? Are we talking about stormwater runoff? Are we talking about? Um, you know, carbon se- sequestration? These are all things and, and, and the problems that you run into. And I think this is. Maybe where. Matt and Kelly are going is that. You know, the amount of carbon that's se- sequestrated or the amount of. Stormwater that is, you know, managed or mitigated by this. They're not super. Large amounts and there are other technical types of things that could be done. To meet those same sort of. Um, you know, um. Amounts or baselines. So, you know, a tree is one. Method of doing that. And, and so we got to be careful with what we're trying to say, what the purpose is, and we have to be very good at articulating that. And if it's canopy because of heat, we need to quantify that. So that we can then put on them, put a condition on that is roughly proportionate. To making sure that we're getting what we're trying to, to accomplish. And, and that's some of the challenge and we've got subject matter experts. And trying to marry it up with the legal. And it's still, you know, to council member Dora's point, you know, it's, it's, we're trying to get this in a way and in a shape that. Makes sense both from a subject matter expert standpoint and from a legal standpoint. But I guess to, you know, Commissioner Barr's comment is that, yes, there are a lot of. In San Francisco, it may cost three grand to cut a tree, but you know, that, that is a different. Jurisdiction that is a different. Time when those ordinances were passed. And that's not to say that. Because of the case law, it's going to stay that way. I mean, there is case law developing that, you know. May start, you know, that might trigger. Um, you know, the local governments to pay just compensation. So we're trying to avoid that. Um, but, but again, the whole process is trying to make sure that. The legal understands the subject matters and, you know, and everybody's talking on the same page because again, I'm hearing a lot of different things that. Maybe I attach value to, you're hearing different things you attach value to. And, you know, we're just trying to make sure the conversation is something that we can take out to the community and everybody understands. What they're talking about because I think there is a lot of misunderstanding about. Potentially what. The scope of some of these comments are, what they're trying to accomplish. And, and so anyway, that's, I, I hope that helps. I mean, we're not here to, and I'm certainly not here to get in the way of a tree ordinance or try to get, but we're trying to get this to a point where it's, we know that it's gonna. Be what the community wants and needs and then also be something that's not going to get. Overturned or create a lot of liability for the city. So that's kind of.
Jonathan, I have a, that was really excellent. And I, you, you did it. I think you're getting a lot of practice and, and you've got this very succinct and you explained it very well. Um, I have a question based on what you said. Let's say that these trees provide these multiple benefits, the heat mitigation, carbon sequestration. Economic value, um. Stormwater. But. And, and that's kind of where the I tree was, right? It's looking at all the different categories of these benefits and trying to mitigate all of the benefits. But what if in a, in a simplified manner, which would get to, we're not over, over mitigating, but rather under mitigating, but we are mitigating. What if we did pick the one, like the one instead of four? And that the canopy instead of all four values. And then they mitigated for one thing, not four things. I think right there. You're not over calculating, you're, you're, you're just picking on one across the board. Um, quality.
That's what we've been doing. I mean, that's the whole purpose of this was following the, you know, Reno plans increase the canopy size. And so. That's.
That's right.
Yes, trees provide multiple benefits, but we are strictly looking at canopy size. If. We're gonna allow someone to replace a London plain tree with a crab apple, that's not okay. And Jonathan, I know, I appreciate everything you've done, but we don't have anything compared to ten trees to one replacement. Like. So you're overstating what we're saying. But also Jason's has his hand up. I'd like him to be able to speak.
But let me just wrap up then. So on my point. If we directed Matt or asked him at the end of this meeting to focus on one of four qualities. And to come up with a proposal, certainly just on that basis. It's already, you know, not overstating, but rather understating. You know, maybe approach like that might work.
And, and if I might, thank you for that council member, but I think. That is kind of the pitch. I think, um. That is what Matt's focusing on. I think there's some more here. That needs to be kind of discussed in terms of landscaping plans and things so that people understand. You know, the. A couple of the other prongs Kelly mentioned. Administration, um, you know. Does this get subsumed by landscaping maintenance types of? Plans? And, and, and so that's the type of thing. I mean, there's, there's more here. And the canopy is the, the way to go because the canopy is. What's in the master plan, the canopy is. You're out. So anyway, but that's.
Thank you, Jonathan. We agree with that for sure. Canopy is the way to go. Um, Jason, I. You've had your hand up.
One, just one quick comment there with Jonathan. Hey. A- as far as, you know, you mentioned, well, you can't tell somebody they gotta plant ten trees. If you're looking at a mature canopy and, and when those trees. If you're looking at a mature canopy and, and when those trees are mature, they're going to have 10 times the canopy. That's an unequal um, deal. But what about all of the years that you don't have that amount of canopy? I, I mean, i- i- can't that be factored in as well? We're, we're, we're losing a mature tree that is providing canopy now. And, um, it's going to be, you know, decades before those trees that you plant as mitigation can fulfill that, that same amount of canopy.
I, I think that's a great comment, but on the backside of that, you've got a mature tree that only has a lifespan that's going to be shorter going forward. So that you have, potentially you have to account for the fact that you're going to have a tree that's dying sooner compared to having multiple trees. If it's a three to one that are going to actually be there much longer, you know, for the, for the public. I mean, yes, I get it at this present time, there's a loss perceived by the present public. But I mean, that's part of the issue that we have with quantifying this and it's a great conversation, which is like, okay, how do we make sure we're dealing apples to apples? And you know, how do we do a net present value of an existing tree? And how, how are we valuing it? Are we valuing it for the canopy today? Are we valuing for the canopy over the term of the tree or the term of the trees? I mean, I, that's a good point. And, and that's kind of what this interaction is and why we're having difficulties and discussions. Because what your view of it is may not be my view, may not be somebody else's confusion and we need to have those conversations.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
I've got two bigger points, but just to follow up on that, I mean, that's a hypothetical. It's not perceived. If someone cuts down a big tree, I do lose that canopy. And if you plant smaller trees, it's a while and there's nothing to be said within these ordinances necessarily that those trees will be protected in the long run at a hundred years for that hypothetical makeup. But my larger question goes, actually, I, I kind of have one for Matt and one for Jonathan. Um, Matt, it sounds to me like you are trying to balance between a legally appropriate argument and forestry practices that are agreed upon by specialists and all of that. Um, so I, I think I kind of asked, I, I just kind of opening this up to you, like, if you could measure any way, Matt, what would you want to do? That's kind of my first question, like, with, what's the best way you think to do it with the legal arguments? Does you understand their structure around you, which I don't know? And you've been, you've, I mean, you've been mired in this stuff for months. Uh, kudos to you. Um, and yes, I'm not a statistician either. That's why I stopped doing forestry. And then I, I also kind of had a follow up for, um, Jonathan, i- is there a way to parse the language where we can affect currently held parcels of land that are grandfathered in and create a newer regulation with stricter with, uh, reinforcing some of the stuff that Bruce is putting out there on new purchases. So if the BLM does a sale and people buy land from the BLM to develop it, that would be seen as different because they would be under new current codes. Whereas if I've owned the land for 10 years and now I'm going to develop it now, I'm held under something else, if that makes sense. So kind of one question for Matt, what's the best that you can think of in the system that you have right now? And one for Jonathan is a parse pause, because I lived in Oregon during the whole takings debate, uh, you know, 15, 20 years ago. And that's what I hear you saying and I, I understand that logic. So kind of thinking, could we parse the takings thing out and come up with two codes here?
Think of that, Jason, and I'll, 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 uh, address that first. Um, to me, I, I think, I think the, the, the most appropriate metric is, is the, the canopy overall that we have. And I think that's supported by the, the, our master plan, urban forestry plan, the very, you know, the different um, interagency goals is, is supporting increasing our canopy. And that's been the focus of, you know, even this group we've talked about for years that, you know, our, our canopy based on the the 2012 study is, is, you know, about 5% of our overall land cover. So I think using the, the canopy coverage, um, as, as our you know, it is, is really what we're looking at, I think is probably the most appropriate um, way to move forward. And you know, I've, I've struggled with how do we quantify the expected canopy of a tree? Um, you know, because of the issues that, that Commissioner Albright brought up, that, you know, it's a very challenging environment for trees and it's kind, and it's hard to um, you know, this tree might not be successful here or there. But I do think that, you know, in the proposed code update, we, we've addressed the soil volume, the soil quality, the irrigation. You know, all of those things that, uh, the, the actual planting of the tree itself, we've addressed all of those issues so that we are ensuring that the tree is set up for success. So because of that, I, I do think that the right way to look at this is, um, by, you know, by doing an analysis of the, the, the canopy provided by existing trees that are in the landscape. You know, so that we, we can actually come up with what is a, um, a reasonable expectation of the, the overall canopy size that that tree should attain in its lifetime. And, and use, use that as the metric to compare what we have now and what's being installed. And I think that, 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 that overall canopy goal will also help to, you know, with the actual planning and, and in the future, we might, um, you know, change how we lay out parking lots and things like that to, to maximize the overall coverage in the long term provided by, by that tree canopy. So I, I, I do think that we're, that, you know, we've explored a lot of different, uh, potential approaches and, and I do think that, that canopy, um, it overall canopy uh, expected canopy at maturity is, 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 is a really viable option to, um, to pursue. You know, and, and I hope that we, you know, have the resources to, to do a more in-depth analysis. You know, to, um, to, to guide our regulatory um, stances as we go forward. Does, I, do you think that answers your, your question? Well, Jason, yeah, thank you.
And then, yeah, thanks again for the question. I mean, I think, again, that is something we can definitely look at. The tension that it creates though is if, if we start discriminating against certain you know, if people aren't treated equally. You know, we give them a pass because these are trees planted before a certain date, or we're only going to do it in a certain like a commercial setting, or we're only going to do it in a residential setting. What we start losing at that point is if credibility on the master plan. If what we are trying to do is create more tree canopy across the city. But you exempt, for instance, you know, single family housing in dwellings. And that's 95% of the land use at the city of Reno. And I'm not saying those are the numbers. I'm just saying if you start doing that, then it starts looking like you're just surcharging you know, specific portions of the population and they're bearing the cost for everybody. And that starts to look like what we were talking about with the takings. I mean, it's kind of a, if, if it's something that the public has deemed to be important, the public at large has deemed to be important, then basically everybody should really have the same rule and should be paying for it. And that's how you kind of socialize the cost across the board. But if you start exempting, if you start just applying it here, but not there, then you, you get into a, a, a problem where it starts to look like you're, you're, you're making certain people pay for things, people that can't stand up for themselves or people that can't fight it. So that's kind of, you know, um, you know, a, a concern. I, but to your point, can we look at phasing it in? Can we look at having different codes? Um, I think that's definitely something we can explore in, um, and if there's a model up in Oregon that has survived, you know, some, I, I'm totally open to that sort of thing. So.
I'm going to jump in just really quickly to what you just said, Jonathan. Um, one of the things, first of all, Anna has commented and you've heard it, she's really uncomfortable when you use these very large percentages because they're not, they, they then get picked up by other people. And they become what is, in, in contrast to what really is, right? So when you say things like 95% is provided by, those aren't, those aren't any kind of equivalents. And we don't want people to pick that up and think that is a number because it's not, it's not a number. She's just cautioning you to try to be a little more careful. But what I was just going to ask you as a follow-up is when you were talking about socializing or putting costs onto some people versus others. The way I would look at this and just, I'm not looking for an answer, but just some stuff for the team to think about. Everybody pays property taxes, right? In their single family home and businesses do too, right? There's a variety of property taxes. And we take those taxes and some portion, a very small portion is true, but some portion of that then goes into urban forestry. Right? It's one of the businesses of the city. So we're, we're supporting parks, we're doing streetscaping. We're pruning trees, we're planting new trees, we're doing tree, discounted tree giveaways, et cetera. We, we are trying and those trees are getting planted at individual homes. They are buying them, you know, they pay the, the raw cost. Um, not the marked up cost. So that's how those giveaway programs work. What I'm saying is that go for, excuse me, people are paying in and then their taxes are going to do with something which then is a community benefit and does occur at people's individual homes. And so I guess I'm just wondering if there's two ways. I mean, yes, if you're in for a permit, you, you know, you're required to do a whole bunch of things that a person at their house isn't required to do, you know? Follow a set of rules and guidelines and requirements and expectations, et cetera. You're treated differently than a person at their own home because they're not in asking for discretionary approval of something. So I'm just saying that, that it isn't all or nothing, that some of this is paid for by taxes. And there is, you know, even if they themselves aren't at their house doing the same thing that somebody else is at a 300 acre site. Do you, you know what I'm saying? That, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I'm hearing you. I, it's, um, I don't know if I have a specific comment other than, I mean, I think this is all good discussion and it's all worthy of looking at it and how it applies and just making sure that whatever is done is done in a way that's even handed and, and, and and, um, and I'm up to looking at different models and whatnot. I mean, it's, but, but we just don't want to just say it's, it's one thing to just say master plan or to say, you know, stormwater and then have, put a requirement on. Um, you know, we have to track it back and make sure that what the requirement is, is really meeting the goal that we have. And we're doing things that are in pursuit of that goal and we're not just giving lip service. So that's kind of the point.
I, I, I think, you know, to make it equal is what we've wanted in the plan is a, a code that is, uh, uh, able to be applied to everyone equally and protects the maximum amount of canopy. But what we're hearing from legal is that's not going to be possible because in certain situations, it's going to be deemed a takings or it's not going to be applicable. So I, I, I understand the, you know, trying to come up with some equality in how this is being applied. But I'm also like learning about the legal framework that we're working in and I want to maximize the amount of canopy that we can protect based off of the legal framework that's being put in front of me, which is a risk of takings. Which if we change the code and people buy land now, we can, uh, we can control that differently than people who own the land already. Uh, so I think that's where I'm thinking like our goal as a, our commission is to increase canopy cover. And I really appreciate all the work Matt's done on, and, and everyone's done on the forestry and Jonathan, all the time you've given gave, given us explaining the legal ramifications. So I mean, this is me trying to find that middle ground to maximize canopy cover based on the legal arguments I'm being presented.
Okay, Matt has his hand up. So Matt, I'll, I'll, I'll let you make a comment and then we'll go to Kelly and then I have a comment. So go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. So, so kind of two things here. So, uh, I heard some comments about, you know, everyone's paying taxes into maintaining our trees. And, um, and to me, you, you know, we have, we do receive about a little over $2 per capita for, you know, for the socialization of the care of our city-owned trees. So we maintain, you know, we have our crew here and we maintain over 25,000 trees in our inventory, which are, which is detailed under, uh, Title 832. Um, you know, so I, I think that, you know, that's, that's important to realize. The other thing is that, um, you know, through the, some of these conversations, we, we have the tools to, um, to move forward with a lot of what we have in code here to, um, to ensure the proper installation of new trees and the care of those trees for required trees as part of landscape plans. So, um, you know, and, and I think that's a huge thing is that, that we already, we already have the ability to do, to do that. What's, what's really the holdup here is the preservation of trees that were not required. So trees that are just existing in the landscape that we've never, that we don't have record or, um, you know, that aren't included in a landscape plan from before that, that we're having such a difficult time quantifying and figuring out ways to, to mitigate for the removal of those trees. And I'm not saying that those trees are not important, but what's, what's a little frustrating to me is that we, we do have the tools to, to move forward with installing new trees that will provide us canopy. We have the, we have the tools to, um, ensure that those trees are maintained and protected in the environment going forward. And, and that's where, you know, I think as far as growing our canopy and um, and, and, and preserving our canopy in the future, I, I think, you know, we, we've set the ground to, to really make a big stride in that direction. Um, you know, and, and I, I, I hope that we can, that we can move in that direction. And that's not, I'm not saying that I don't want to preserve the trees that we have. I just think that based on all the things that I've learned from Jonathan about the legalities um, over these past couple of months, I, I, I think that that's, you know, that we have a really good strategy. And, and I hope that we can, um, you know, together we can, we can work on a strategy that works for everyone. And, and you know, it's, we're not, we're not all going to get everything that we want, but I think that we have an ability to to make a, a difference and really move forward.
Matt, maybe it's the simplest thing that you already had in there. This group already put in preservation of X trees. Uh, I'm sorry, preservation of a tree means you avoid planting three more in your required uh, tree planting. Maybe if we change the conversation from three trees to X square feet of canopy. And we already have a process, you've already built it in, it's a one step. You save a tree. I mean, what I mean is X amount of canopy. And you get, you get something in return, which is you, you don't have to do this much. And if we can come up with an equation, we may be done. I mean, it may not have to be much more complicated than that.
Yeah, I would, I would hope it wouldn't.
That sounds good.
Yeah, Kelly, you want to make your comment, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add in that, you know, the intent of, of, of kind of summarizing some of the, the research that has been done over the past couple of weeks is to, it, it's to update this commission on what we found. Um, and to also update you on, you know, some of those limitations that we found as part of this work. You know, we've been trying really hard to think through options that will work that will make sense, that will move the needle, but still be legally defensible, still be something that can be administered and enforced, um, and, you know, is reasonable and all of those things. And so the, the information that, that Matt has been presenting this evening is intended to just say, hey, this is what we found. Um, we've got just a couple of slides left in the, the presentation. You know, one of the other things that, that Matt was going to speak to is is the items on, on this page, um, just in terms of saying, hey, just apart from, you know, mitigation of removal of existing non-required trees. There's all these other things that we can do or that we are doing to protect the existing tree canopy and options for us. And then also, you know, one of the things that we're going to talk about is okay, what are we doing in the near term and currently what are opportunities that we have to make additional changes? Um, and certainly the data and fleshing out some of the data and working with that is a big piece of that too. So I'm hoping if you'll just, um, allow Matt to, to finish going through his part of the presentation. Like I said, we've just got a, a couple of other slides. One for him, I think, and then one for me as well. Um, and I think that'll add, help to add some context to the conversation as well.
Great. So where, where were we in this slide? Do we, um, do I still need to cover some points on here, Kelly?
Yes, I think you were going to just, if you want to just start at the top and go through.
Okay, so our protection strategies. our protection strategies for, for what we have. So, so we do, so we have significant new incentives to preserve trees. Um, I know that we have some comments on, you know, what those incentives are and how to, to, to make those happen. So I'm sure we'll have some, some comments on that. But what's, what's important to know is that, so trees that are preserved for an incentive, so a tree that, so if you're preserving that tree in order to receive an extra unit or less parking spaces, et cetera, those become required trees in the landscape. So we just talked about how we can't really protect a tree unless it's considered a required tree in the landscape plan. So we're, we're making those trees required trees. And then, um, those required trees must be protected from construction and other activities. And they require monitoring during construction to, to ensure that those trees are adequately being preserved. And then if the, the, um, the developer fails to make the agreed upon, preservation efforts to the tree, that the administrator can retract that incentive, issue a stop work order or require mitigation, a mitigation agreement. If the incentive trees are not protected and are damaged. So, and now Kelly and I talked about this earlier because that sounds kind of vague and who's the administrator and you know, what, who's going to ensure that the trees are preserved? So, you know, so the administrator technically would be the director of development services or they're designated. So, so again, you know, we've discussed in this group that hopefully will have a, a, a landscape architect type person. Who, who will, who will be able to kind of deal with these kinds of issues. And then the, the mitigation agreement. So if that tree is not preserved for whatever reason, if they don't water it or they rip up the roots and they forget to put up the fence or whatever. You know, that, that the city has the ability to, to work with the contract with the developer to come up with a, a mitigation agreement that is equitable for, for the tree that, that, that was not protected adequately. So, you know, so there's a number of different ways that that can be done. And, and I think it's important to, to recognize that we didn't, the, the wording there is not vague for, for the purpose of, you know, a loophole. It's because every situation is different. Every different development agreement, every different property being developed is unique in its own way. And the administrator needs some flexibility to create a, um, you know, a mitigation that is, you know, that is, that is equitable so that the mitigation is done. You know, fairly and we're mitigating it in a way that makes sense. Now that, that required tree, once the, the development is completed, that tree that is now considered a required tree because it was used for an incentive, it must be maintained. Um, and then it, it needs to be replaced if it dies or is dead. And then keep in mind that when it is replaced, they need to adhere to the, you know, the new planting standards and the soil volume and the irrigation and all those other, those other things. So if that tree does need to get replaced, um, we're replacing it properly. Let's see. So, um, and then we do have, so we, we've included some new language, um, for penalties applied per tree. Um, you'll remember that, you, you know, we had instances in the past where, um, somebody came in and ruined a whole bunch of trees on their one property and then they were, they were fined as one, you know, it was one offense. So they were fined a hundred dollars for destroying all these trees and then they just had to fix it. So, um, it's important not to forget that, that, you know, that we've changed that so that each individual tree that is damaged is a, is an offense that, you know, that would be addressed through code enforcement.
Matt, where do we find that? Is that in Title 8 or 18?
And I'm glad you asked because that's our next slide, but, um, so the, um, and, and then just again, that aside from those trees on, on private parcels, which we're talking about, the, the incentives and everything else, trees that are in the right of way, still keep in mind that they have those additional protections under chapter 832. So trees that are in the public right of way, again, are, um, you know, will be appraised and treated as a, as a green infrastructure asset by the city, just as, as we're doing now. So, so, you know, just keep that in mind. So if you want to move to the next slide, although the last one. The one with the red light. There you go. So, um, so to, to council member doers question, you know, where is that in? In writing, I just wanted to include the, the actual language that, that we're including for those incentivized trees when they are not preserved adequately. So, um, so everyone can take a look at, at, at that specific language there. And then Kelly, what exact, exactly where is that in the code? Is 18?
This is in, oh, let me pull up the citation.
1804105?
Yes, it's right here. That sounds right. Yes, 1804105 and there's subsection C. Seven.
And so Matt, that just refers to during construction activities, not moving forward for preserving the trees in perpetuum.
This is, so these are for incentive trees. So if they've preserved the tree in order to receive an incentive such as less required parking spaces or, um, additional dwelling units or, um, the wall articulation thing, which, which has been a hot topic.
Yeah, it's interesting. I don't think it's the wall articulations, the wall length. You know, articulations don't contribute to climate change while length does. But anyways, my question is, this only applies to trees during the construction period. So as soon as construction's done, they can cut out in an incentive tree according to this language.
Well, I, and that's, I, I don't think that that, that's going to happen because so during construction, they, they need to, so they need to have developed their plan, their landscape and, you know, their whole development plan with that tree in mind. So it's not like removing the tree is going to allow them to do other activities on their parcel. So they've, they've incorporated this, this tree into their plan and they've incorporated, um, a tree preservation plan. And they've agreed to monitoring during construction. So the idea is that, is that once that development is completed, you know, the, the tree has, we've made assurances that that tree has been preserved to the extent that's possible and that we've agreed that, um, you know, that is reasonable to say that that tree has been preserved. And then once that tree is, is, is preserved and the development is completed, it's a required tree in the landscape. So the, the maintenance activities, the irrigation and all those things are required to, um, to remain. And then, um, you, you know, to, 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 uh, maintain that tree perpetually. If, if, you know, and yes, it's possible the dead tree dies or was removed later, but it still needs to be replaced. And that's where we, we talked about how, um, they, so they have to replace the tree. And they have to replace it with all of the new requirements. So they're going to have to modify the soil potentially. They're going to have to, you know, get the right kind of tree. They're going to have to plant it properly. They're going to have to install the irrigation. So there's really no incentive for them to re, remove the tree later. It doesn't, there's not, um, you know, because they have to replace it. So, so to me, I think we've, we've made it, we've decentivized removing the tree. There's no, they're not getting any gain from removing it.
Correct. Right. So you have it protected in multiple places.
We, right. So we, we, we have it protected in multiple stages of the development in multiple places and in multiple aspects of that tree's life. From beginning of development until completion. So, and you, you know, of course, for whatever reason, the tree might die or be removed. And, you know, I, we've, the best that we can, defensively requires that they replace it. And, and there's, you know, there can be significant costs in removing the tree and replacing it again. So I, I don't see a reason that somebody would want to remove it when they have to put a tree back anyways.
Correct. Yeah. Just making sure that replacement part is part of all types of trees that we're trying to preserve and manage. Um, one slight question I have is the volume requirement. So say there's a tree that's required part of a streetscape and they need to replace it. And they don't have the current soil requirements. So now they have to create that, like, how feasible is that for developers or costs? Um, I, I just don't know. I don't know what that looks like as far as creating that volume.
It, it is expensive. So it's, um, and, and that's where, that's why we need to be careful about this. And, and to be honest, my personal opinion is that, for the vast majority of, of cases, I, I think it's, it's oftentimes better to remove, uh, you know, a kind of a subpar tree that's planted in a really poor spot and you know, reconstruct it properly and so that we provide the new tree with the, the best chance of success. You, you know, that said, i- in most circumstances, like, um, you know, in current development projects, we do, we look at the individual trees that are there and, you know, if it is a, you know, a significant tree that's in good condition and it's a tree that we want to preserve in the landscape, then we have methods to do that. So ju- as an example, there's some trees in front of city hall that are, you know, tearing up the concrete and, um, the city's decided that we need to fix that. So instead of, you know, in that case, I don't, those, those are nice trees that we want to preserve. So we're going to use some of the methods that we've developed and, it's like through our capital improvement projects, which a lot of you are familiar with, like in Gordon Street and things like that, where um, we're going to remove the concrete and work together with public works to accommodate the tree as best as possible while also, um, getting a, a new, you know, nice concrete. So it's, of course, it's a little bit of a compromise, but, we do have those tools at our disposal to, to make decisions and, and individual instances to, to, you know, to do what's best. I, so I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, no, I do. Um, you know, one of my concerns is just, I don't know how many streetscape trees are required, like, I just know there's so many trees that are in the tiniest little slivers of concrete, you know, where the bare dirt's available and
Right.
I don't know how many of those trees are required now. And if they have to do any kind of replacement maintenance, if they would have to do a huge like digging up of the infrastructure to create this new soil volume, I just don't know that.
They would, yes. So, because we're not installing those, those little squares anymore of where, you know.
Right. Where the trees don't survive. Yeah. And I, I do like the idea of like more islands. I don't know if that was like something you brought up, you know, instead of having little squares here and there, you know, create some more sustainable area.
Right, right. Because to me, it's not about, you know, the, the goal is to have the, the right soil volume for a tree. And if that means uh, moving things around, it's, you know, I, I don't think that we want to encourage the most expensive ways of, of, of getting to that goal. The goal is to provide enough soil to get canopy. So
Correct.
Um, and that's, you know, if you look at our, at the, the downtown streetscape design manual and the, the details that we came up as a part of that process, we kind of came up with, you know, a menu of different options that the developers can use to get that soil volume. Um, and, and have trees that will grow based on their own situation. So, you know, they might have the room to put in a, a parkway. Or, you know, if it's, if they're really tightly constrained and they might need to look at using, you know, soil cells and, um, some of those, those more enhanced methods that, like that we use on Virginia Street. So, so we recognize that there's a lot, there's tons of different situations and, um, different ways to reach the goal, but the goal is to have adequate soil volume, adequate irrigation and the proper trees planted in the right place. And that's, that's really, you know, the, the, the basics of it. Um, and we want to be flexible with, with how developers make that happen.
Bruce, I see you have your hand up. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions here. For one, you were struggling to find a value for the mitigation of what a tree was worth. Um, how did we determine that a tree is worth another unit or uh, another hundred feet of wall or, um, another park or less parking spaces? How, how did we determine that value for these trees?
And, and Commissioner Barrow, go ahead and, and answer that. Um, those incentives and the metrics for that were the result of conversations with internal planning staff. Certainly it's something that, you know, if the commission feels like other numbers are more appropriate, if more trees should be required to get a unit, then, then please, we would ask that you make that recommendation. You know, we were trying to keep it the same in terms of, I think the, you know, the initial recommendation out of Urban Forestry Commission for that additional landscaping credit was based on, you know, those two thresholds of tree sizes. And a certain, uh, you know, certain, um, numbers of them. So we tried to have, tried to keep it somewhat similar for the subsequent incentives that were listed. Certainly though, I think any of those numbers could, could shift based on the recommendations from, you know, that we hear in, in conversations either with you or with other stakeholders or through the process.
Oh, and I'm going to jump in here. That was a great explanation from Kelly. And here's the thing, Kelly, and I think we just got to kind of work through this. The commission, what I heard them say, and I'm just trying to do my facilitation talk here, which is, here's what I heard you say. I heard them not really supporting these mitigation incentives other than the one they originally included, which was a, a three tree credit for a one tree saved. And I think in this conversation, we've evolved from a tree to tree canopy. And I think going forward, we're going to think about that term and look at where that belongs in this whole ordinance. Where does the word tree canopy belong versus tree? So we put the metrics on the right way. But what I also heard, um, the hour and a half or so I was on with the planning commission was a number of the ones that spoke out didn't support it either. So they had some similar reactions to the commission. And that's why I said about a half an hour ago, maybe the best and simplest way is to just provide the incentive that the Urban Forestry Commission originally proposed. And you know what? If saving three, you know, avoiding planting three trees of, trees that are required already to be planted is not an incentive enough. Over to, let's say you have a year of doing this and you're not saving trees, you know, it's not achieving the goal. Maybe you have to look at that ratio. You know, maybe you need to avoid five trees in the landscape required to be planted or something. But I think we're, I think what I'm hearing, I'm just sharing what I've heard at the commission, what I heard at the planning commission was the same concern about that Bruce just brought up, which is Jonathan has told us it's difficult enough to put one tree against another and say that was an equal trade. Or one canopy against another, but to say a tree is somehow a quarter of a unit or another tree is half of a parking spot is really difficult. And so I just want to pause here and just see, you know, follow up on his point. See if we want to continue with a expansive array of incentives or kind of stick with one and kind of refine it.
I think we need to stick, stick with the one. I mean, I haven't heard one commissioner say they want to move forward with these trees to hardscape. So, and I think we need to, like you said, Naomi, move forward with changing it from scums to canopy.
I, I, I think the thing to me, uh, that I, I struggle with here too is that you got a developer who's coming and developing an apartment complex or he's developing grocery store or whatever. You know, the square footage of the building is what's valued. The tree really isn't valuable to him per se. I mean, he doesn't realize that trees add value to his property on down the line, but I think I mentioned at the last meeting, six minutes after his project's done. uh, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, six minutes after his project's done, that it's sold on to the next person. So um, they're not in it for the long haul. And um, I I I haven't seen what what the penalties would be if if that tree went south during construction. You know, yeah, we're talking about a mitigation plan at some stage during during it all. But what if they don't even honor that? I mean, it it's, it there's just, it's too wishy-washy. And I think we're we're counting on on people doing the right thing that don't have the best of interest in it that we do. And I think if we're telling them that, look, our concern is trees, we want to stick with trees, we want if you can't keep that tree for your project, then when you do your landscape plan, which is required, then you have to, you you can either keep the tree and and get three less trees or um, you know, you have to plant the full full load that we we require. And if if we can't mitigate any further than that, so be it. That that, you know, I I that's not a hill I'm willing to die on. But I I just, I think we're getting out into a really fuzzy place here um, that's it's it's out of our bellywack for sure. I I think we're all tree people and we care about trees. I don't, I don't I don't think that we want to incentivize it that way. That's that's just my two cents, Woody.
And Kelly, I think what you're hearing too is they're not willing to preserve trees at all costs. That's one. Like, okay, if there's loss of tree, there's loss of tree. We know more trees are going to be planted and it's a long, it's a long game, right? Like, you have to look at, you know, decades, not just instantly. But number two about this is that they they, I am hearing that they're saying it's hard to achieve, even with the leaving the one. Your rules would still apply. So let's say you're saving one tree and you're getting credits for three. If they don't save the one tree, they're not going to get the credits for the three, right? I mean, it's just they'll do what they can, if they can. And so I think that's, that's what I'm hearing is there's an acceptance that there's loss, you know, loss of existing tree canopy. There already is. Today, there already is, right? We're just trying to provide, I think the group is, some incentive to not have a loss. We may not get there fully, but they're they're not quite willing. And the last thing I wanted to say is Bruce almost said it, but I wanted to put this explanation part on. To my knowledge, most developers maximize what they can. They've already figured out how many units they can fit on that space in today's world, right? They're, we're trying to maximize density. They have maximized it. Saying you can add an extra unit, I mean, can they? I mean, can they even fit it on the space? Uh, I think the parking lot one might be viable because the parking lot is absorbing heat itself, you know, that parking space. One less parking space means there's more room to have the soil thing that Matt was talking about before. That might have some viability, you know, it might have some nexus to this heat, you know, the heat issue. But anyway, uh, these are just some thoughts and as we're moving forward on this mitigation to think about.
Certainly, and I I appreciate the input from the from the commission. You know, I knew that we had um, some commissioners last time who had voiced support for some of the incentives um and had issues with others uh of the incentives. But, you know, a- as a body, if there's a a recommendation that that you wish to make um, related to that, we would love to hear it. And I'll just add in terms of the, you know, the in- the incentives that are in there um, that in that latest draft, two of them are very similar to the incentives that are provided for affordable housing. Um, you know, where we try to get folks to build more affordable housing, income restricted housing um, that, you know, there's a density um bonus associated with that. And there's also parking reductions associated with that. So that's just an example of another place in the code where we offer similar incentives. You know, just trying where we can to um, like Commissioner Barr had mentioned, to, you know, get folks to do voluntary compliance and and have them desire to save trees. If there's a way that we can do that, um, certainly, we want to make sure that that happens. And and certainly on the unit one, um, with the the housing crisis that we have here in the community, if there is an opportunity for us to be able to not only get someone to potentially build additional units, but save existing trees. I I do think that that is a win-win. Certainly, it's something that um, I hope that the the commission um, takes into consideration of, you know, potentially being able to address some of the city's goals on a couple of different fronts. Um, whether the numbers are the right numbers, you know, I don't know. Um, but but definitely just wanted to add that additional context. Thank you.
Kelly, that tho- those are great words. And I think one of the challenges too is in the master plan, they have many things, like they want to enhance stormwater infiltration. You know, I mean, there's other goals besides affordable housing in the master plan, many goals, clear air, right, recreation. Um, many, many goals. I know affordable housing is our top one, uh, really. Um, and that's why we're actually putting dollars to it, right? We are putting significant dollars to it. But at the one, at the single tree level, it gets very hard to to work in that environment of affordable housing. You know what I mean? Like, it is the, a very admirable goal, and I fully support it as a council member. But I'm not sure it 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 has a home here, you you know what I mean? Because I don't know on an individual tree basis if we can get there. But anyway, and you know.
I would just like to mention that um, I have support of less parking spaces because that equals less infrastructure that contributes to urban heat islands. Um, everything else, though, contributes to more heat. And that's why we're seeing such a increase. You know, Reno tops the list of cities that are increasing in heat every year because we're going from either agri- agricultural land or rangelands to, you know, concrete. And um, most new developments, I don't see additional space for additional homes. I mean, most new developments have way less open space, greenery, common areas than developments that are made in the seventies. Granted, those developments from the seventies use a lot of water for all the turf and all the, you know, landscaping, but there's a lot more canopy cover than what's going in now. Um, the developments that are going now will never have the canopy cover of the develop, some of the developments that are put in the seventies. Um, so that's where I draw the line is I don't, I can't see any incentive that incentivize more um, concrete, more hardscaping, you know. And so I don't know how the other commissioners feel, though.
But a- and honestly, Anne, I I agree with you on on, it would be nice to have less parking spaces. But uh, kind of getting back to Councilman Doers' uh comment about these developers figure out how many units they can get on, and that's what they're after. They they they'd love not to have to put in the parking spaces that they tend not to put in enough for the for the uh development or apartment complexes. Um, living in one, I know that for a fact. So um, a- a- and you know, um, a a case in point is the the new Reno ice rink. It's a beautiful facility, lovely, you know. And for their everyday, day-to-day stuff, they got more than adequate parking there. But when they have a hockey game, they got that open field just full of cars. And the next day, it's full of trash. So um, you know, it's got to be kind of a case-by-case thing. Some some places taking out another parking space wouldn't be ideal if they've got so many units in there now that they're, you know, nearly wall-to-wall. So um, I I just think that for our purposes, keeping the, keeping the um preservation cleaner and more designed towards trees is probably a better, a better way to go.
Thank you, Bruce. Well spoken.
Does anybody else want to make a comment to that effect to give Kelly some guidance on how we're all thinking about this?
And if there are no other comments on the incentives, um, we do have one additional slide for you this evening.
Well, let's look at the additional slide and then we'll.
Well, but I mean, Kelly, let's, this is so important. I mean, does any other commissioner have it? I mean, whether it's Jason or Gary, Sonia, um, et cetera. Do you have a gut feeling? Because this is a kind of a very important time to let Kelly know how, what you think is reasonable. You've turned, you've turned on your screen, Jason, but did you want to add something?
No, I mean, I I I think all the points I would make have been made. Um, I really appreciate all the hard work that's been done on this. So um, yeah, I've got nothing to add.
But what you're saying, you concur with the things that were said by Bruce and Anna already?
Yep.
I I would add that I concur with Bruce. Um, I like our original mitigation. I think the other elements and the other documents in the city do their job to promote affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. And I like the idea of our urban forestry ordinance moving forward with a focus on tree preservation, particularly canopy and whatever incentive the analysis and the data uh suggests is appropriate. Um, I'm, I mean, three was just a number we came up with. If it needs to be something greater uh, based on some mathematical analysis and that, I'm more than happy to help you or be involved and guide. I I I have a little bit of math skill here. Um, I'm, I I'm all for it, but I would just assume leave the other embellishments or mitigation measures or incentives, as as Mr. Shipman aptly pointed out. I I'd soon leave those for other ordinances and leave them out of this one. And that's my comment.
Well, Kelly, there you've heard from at least four or so um, people. So that should give you a flavor. I I think everybody wants to see your last slide and see where you're thinking of going. But I wanted you to get some clarity here, like not just leave it open, you know.
Yeah, no, I wasn't.
That's our main purpose of today, right?
Certainly, yeah, I appreciate uh appreciate all the input. Okay, so last slide for you. We just wanted to talk about additional opportunities, you know, short-term and long-term. Um, like we mentioned, when it comes to the research that that Matt and his team have been conducting over the last couple of weeks. And um, certainly, I think that there's a lot there. There's a lot that shows that, you know, what we have even in our existing adopted ordinances of of promoting the planting of those larger class uh, class size or canopy-sized class trees um, is is definitely supported by what we've seen so far, but that there is definitely a need for additional research, additional data collection, additional analysis. And I think so opportunities for partnering with other agencies too, to make sure that, you know, when it comes to using some of that data, especially for crafting mitigation strategies, that it is solid and defensible. Um, and that's one that, you know, that's something that we want to make sure that that we get right. Um, but just in terms of uh, kind of timing-wise of different potential phases and things that we want to make sure that the 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 commission keeps in mind um, as we go through this process. And, you know, this is information that was in that that memo that I would just like to to reiterate. We've, we've talked a lot about, you know, through the various meetings that we've had about the term discretionary permits. And, you know, when I was talking to Matt, he was, it was, I I think made a, made a really good suggestion that to me, that has very, that has very distinct meaning, a discretionary permit. But that it may be useful to actually describe a little bit more for this commission, the distinction between discretionary permits and administrative permits and, you know, where the regulations come into play and um, and and how those two different types of permits work. So please just bear with me with with this, with this description. So when it comes to administrative permits, we're generally talking about something like a building permit um, or grading permit, demolition permit, something that comes in that there's not discretion really in terms of approving it or denying it, in that as long as it meets code standards, it has to be issued, right? It's, it's, we're checking to make sure it meets the letter of the law. It meets those code standards. If it does, that permit is issued. Um, and that is distinct for when we talk about discretionary permits because those are going to be things like conditional use permits or tentative subdivision maps where it is usually some sort of a public hearing process where where not just the planning team, but lots of different agencies take a holistic view of what the project is that's being proposed. Look at the potential impacts, look at the specifics of the property, the proposed use and how it's developed. Um, you know, this compatibility with surrounding uses um, and looking at all of the different potential impacts that could be created by developing that on that particular site. There is more flexibility when it comes to identifying how and when it's appropriate to issue that permit. We call it a discretionary permit because there's discretion involved in it. And I'm sorry, I'm getting some some feedback. I don't know if anybody's um, not not muted. I apologize for that. I'm not sure if anyone else is hearing that. But when it comes to those types of of permits, um, you know, we're able to have more flexibility beyond just looking at what is required by code. We're able to say, okay, what are those impacts? How do we mitigate them so that it would be appropriate to allow for that particular use on that piece of property? There is more flexibility in that. And what happens is that those types of permits, if they're approved, they're usually approved with what are called conditions of approval, additional requirements that make it appropriate to do that development on that site. When we're looking at those impacts, we could potentially look at things like the trees that are on site, the environmental benefits that they provide, the special circumstances around that. And so I want to make sure that that this team knows that, you know, that's flexibility that no matter what happens with the code, that we still have that ability to look at those types of projects in a more holistic view um, and identify those impacts and how to mitigate them. That's why on several different projects around town, you likely will have seen conditions of approval related to the trees that are on site and that, you know, removal of some of them required some sort of additional mitigation that was reflected in the conditions of approval. So that's something that I just want to mention is it's a tool that is out there, it that will continue to be out there. Um, and it is an opportunity, especially on those larger projects or discretionary projects, um, for us to consider and how or when it would be appropriate.
Kelly, Kelly, I'm sorry, I I have to ask. Let's talk about the demolition permit for Lakewood Tennis Club.
Okay. And I I I apologize, I'm not super familiar with it. So so please give me any specific.
Really quickly, demolition permit was issued. Hundreds and hundreds of trees were not only destroyed, but everything else that's on the site hasn't been cared for. And so it's just dying, a slow, painful death. Um, this, that kind of thing, that demolition permit, that kind of situation that you call administrative, that's what we want to prevent from happening, is that an applicant can get a demolition permit and just destroy everything on the property. And all of that is gone. And now that is obviously associated with other sorts of issues. But everything was denuded with a demolition permit, and it's still denuded. And who knows how long it'll be like that. The point is, is I don't want, I I understand the process of discretionary permits and conditions of approvals. I think we're all fairly well-versed in that. What we wanted to just make sure that we don't lose an entire canopy of hundreds and hundreds of trees, you know, with a demolition permit. So how how would you address this?
Sure, no, I I I hear you on that. And I just want to, you know, in showing or talking about some of these opportunities, I just want to remind folks in terms of, you know, some of the tools that we have out there. And I don't know if for that particular case, if there was also a discretionary um, permit that was associated with that, where, you know, those changes were reviewed or not. There may not, I see councilmember Doers shaking her head, so my assumption means that that was not the case. Um, but I, you know, in mentioning discretionary permits, it's just, I want to make sure that this commission is aware of that as a, as a tool. Um, but then.
Let's just ask, I just want to share with you, they applied for discretionary permit. It was running into some challenges, so they withdrew it. Then they demoed, then they reapplied. And in the demo, they tore down a lot of trees. And so the question is, right now, we require a tree inventory, right? Even today, it was put in a year ago. Um, so my question to you related to this is, I know you were sharing opportunities, but let's just talk about what is. Can you append conditions to a building permit? And let me give you an example. Don't building permits still have to meet the standard electrical code, the plumbing code, all of the standard codes uh, have to be in a building permit? Whether you're a discretionary permit or a building permit, you still have to meet code. And could the trees be part of the code? You know, that's the question, I guess.
Certainly, and I mean, that's, I I you, that's of course. Certainly, and I mean, that's, I, I, that's of course what we're talking about for, for the most part here, right? In terms of mitigation requirements or incentives, that, 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 that at its, its core is something that would be applied during the building permit process or those administrative permit.
Or demo, clearing grading.
Sure, absolutely.
Got you.
And so just to, just to speak a little bit more about, you know, as we've been going through the additional, the additional research related to the environmental benefits of specific trees and how to best calculate that and to make sure that it's, you know, equitable and, and seeing all of the variation, um, not just within the different canopy sized classes, but also, you know, species to species of the, the same size. Seeing all of that, um, you know, I think that's something that we came out of that, and as just Matt said, um, realizing that a lot more work would need to be put into collecting and analyzing that data, especially on a local level, to better be able to create defensible mitigation requirements in the code. And so in that near term section on the screen, the second bullet, you know, one of the things that we would like to do is explore some sort of a potential partnership with University of Nevada Reno, um, where we can work through some of those issues and have a, a good collection of data and kind of talk through how that may work. That is something that we are looking to, um, to partner with them, not, not entirely certain how that may work or, you know, what the opportunities are there. We are aware of certain, um, uh, research grants that may be one avenue that we could potentially go down with, um, University of Nevada Reno. Um, certainly there's usually opportunities for working with grad students, that kind of a thing. But that is something that we would like to pursue in order to collect, uh, additional data that we can use in subsequent iterations of the code. And then, of course, just like we've talked about, um, earlier in this meeting and in other meetings of, of partnering with NDF to actually get an updated, um, canopy study, um, online. And what ties into that, um, I'm not sure how many folks here may be familiar with the Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Agency and their efforts to create what's called the Natural Resources Plan. That is, um, you know, the Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Agency, they create the regional plan. That is something that each of the local jurisdictions is required to adhere to. Each of our master plans has to be found in conformance with the regional plan. And of course, you know, our zoning code, um, then complies with and implements the policies in the, the master plan. One of the efforts that kicked off last year that we're, you know, in the middle of the process with is working with regional planning to create that natural resources plan. And what that focuses on is identifying how as a region that we want to protect our natural resources during the development process. So that is, is wide ranging in terms of the types of resources, whether they're, um, things like, you know, our hydrologic resources or its habitat or cultural resources or steep slopes or trees. Um, we had a steering committee meeting end of last week and that, uh, the tree canopy is actually something that we were discussing. And talking about how is a region that we could potentially partner, um, with that tree canopy so that everyone has a better sense, all of the jurisdictions have a better sense of, as a region, what our canopy looks like. You know, where there are areas where we potentially need to focus on. And if there are policies that as a region that we would like to put into place um, that speak to how we address trees and tree canopy during the development process. So I wanted to make sure to bring that up because I think it's an exciting and really important regional effort, um, that's in process right now. I think that there are a lot of opportunities that could potentially come out of that. One of the big things that regional planning is focused on is that making sure that any policies that get put in place are based on data, are based on solid data. So the last several months, they've been working with a consultant to actually collect a lot of the, just the GIS data that's out there about our, uh, natural resources that are in place. And then we did talk about, you know, if there would be an opportunity for partnering with NDF as a region um, on getting that updated tree canopy study. So that's something that I wanted to, to bring up here with this group because I think it's also something that, you know, if we are able to successfully work with UNR on getting some of that additional data, also on canopy coverage and individual trees, that that's something that can feed into that regional effort as well. And then the other piece, the, the part that I'll, I'll end on is, you know, longer term, one of the top three priorities that came out of council zoning code prioritization efforts was a sustainability ordinance. That is something that will be coming back, that, um, once we start to work on that, I think that there will be a lot of opportunities for us to address some of the things that we have talked, uh, talked here about as part of these processes where we could deal with as well through that sustainability ordinance. So, you know, whether or not it's, it's talking specifically about, um, protecting or further incentivizing preservation of tree canopy, addressing urban heat island impacts, addressing air pollution issues, carbon dioxide issues, um, you know, all of those, all of those things. I think that they're great opportunities when we get to the sustainability ordinance, that especially coupled with additional data um, that we are looking to be able to create and collect. And, um, you know, potentially new policies out of the regional plan, those all come together. And I just, I, I want to make sure that this, um, that this team is aware that there are a lot of things on the horizon too, that, you know, this tree ordinance by itself, um, it has a lot of good in it and it can move the needle. But it's not the be all end all, we're going to continue to have opportunities to make improvements in how we protect the tree canopy in Reno and how we want to get at some of those environmental issues that we see the region facing. Um, so with that, I'm gonna step off my soapbox and stop talking, I see there's a couple of hands raised. Matt, was there anything that you wanted to add to?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on the, as far as the partnership with UNR, um, a lot of the folks in this group will remember the, the soil study that we did, um, Megan was a student at UNR who did a really excellent job. And I think they have a really good, uh, program there. Um, and so I've been working with the, uh, the, the research. I don't know what you, what you call it, but the group that, that assigns students to, to do these research projects. So we're, I'm already kind of lined up to, to, to work with a student in the fall on a research project. So this is, you know, I think this is really timely and, um, probably a good, a, a good example that we can work on. So, um, I think it's just important to note that we already have, um, some avenues to, to, to pursue and, um, uh, and hopefully get some really good data, you know, albeit that's, you know, a couple of months out. Um, and then, um, oh, Kelly, I was wondering if there were any opportunities for commissioners to, to get involved with their regional natural resources plan.
Yeah, uh, great question. They actually, I think it's still active, they had put out a survey, a Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Agency in the last week or two, I know that City of Reno shared that on that social media channels. Um, and, um, that is a, you know, what I'll do is I'm gonna look up the link real quick and I'll add that to the chat for those who are interested, um, but there is a, a survey that's out right now where they're seeking to get, um, an understanding of the community's priorities when it comes to natural resources. Now, that's just, you know, one opportunity that's going to help with kind of, um, prioritizing some of the categories that, that are worked on. But then they also have, uh, um, it's like a self-guided tour, um, that they put together for the different types of natural resources in the region. It's a pretty awesome little, little tour and map that they've, um, put together. But then certainly there's going to be additional outreach, um, opportunities actually just presented to, I think it was Regional Planning Commission last week, um, talking about that outreach plan as well. So it's something that you'll see more of, um, about that whole effort in the coming weeks.
Kelly, let me ask a, a practical question. Lots of opportunities as you identify, Matt just said some of this can get done pretty quickly, it sounds like with some additional help. Uh, Anna has brought up the point that we don't need to solve the world and do a world-class research study. Um, that's not what we're here for, we, we're basing it, a lot of our thoughts on a snapshot in time, which is tree cover, canopy cover at any one time. So I'm going to be very interested in how quickly we can get a follow-up canopy cover percentage. You know, we may not want to know a lot more, but we may only need to know a certain amount to address the imminent questions, you know, about where are we today? I want to know too, um, we may have improved, that would be fantastic, but it doesn't obviate the need to do, you know, improve soil or water our trees. Um, you know, I hope we have improved in five years, they certainly do, or seven years. But, um, and I, and I personally, I, I'm hoping to see that, uh, number come through when they do the canopy cover. Um, but, but it doesn't mean if you improved a little bit that, that you're all good. You know, we're, we're on a stated goal that was adopted by the Urban Forestry Commission within a stated time. And the time was very long, it was 20 years, and the goal was fairly minimal. It was a doubling, uh, to 10%. It isn't like we heard Phoenix looking at 25% tree cover. Like, we didn't, uh, we, again, the urban forestry adopted urban manage, uh, forestry management plan. They set very modest goals in a very long time period. So we, we need to balance, once we get the data, we need to balance, are we on track? Or can we do some things to, to help speed this up and achieve our goals? And better sooner than 20 years would be amazing, right? We don't have to wait 20 years to achieve a goal, it was just where we were at that time. So what can we talk about for next steps? I mean, we've talked through this mitigation, I think you have some pretty clear feelings about where this group is. Um, we know what Matt needs to do in terms of a mitigation strategy. We, you know, one approach is adopt it without the mitigation strategy and come back later, right? And put the mitigation strategy in when it's all kind of vetted. Um, one, one proposal tonight we heard was move forward with Title Eight and, um, continue to work on the mitigation aspect of Title 18. So is the plan for you to go back and, and talk with Kelly, strategize and kind of put a new timeframe together based on what you think we need to do to get this across the finish line?
Absolutely, I think that there's some additional efforts that need to occur, we'll have some of those conversations and identify what next steps are. I think for tonight, absolutely, we want to hear any input, um, or preferred direction that, you know, Urban Forestry Commission would like to see. That's only going to be, you know, conversation that will help us as we move through those subsequent conversations and with other stakeholders as well, um, to hear that input. Certainly, if there are specific recommendations for changes, we would 100% love to hear them. Um, and, you know, absolutely, council member, in terms of, of options of, you know, if there's recommendations for moving forward just with, um, Title Eights and/or, you know, moving forward with what we have in Title 18 and, and working, continue to work on the, um, mitigation measures, absolutely, that's another option. Or if there's specific other suggestions that, um, the Urban Forestry Commission would like to make, again, we would love to hear them. Certainly, when we left the last meeting, what we were setting out to do was trying to better understand if there was a tool and a mechanism that could be used where we could put into place some sort of mitigation requirements that were reasonable, legally defensible and could be administered without, you know, having to hire tons of additional staff to be able to make it happen. That's what we were trying to get at, and that's why, you know, if you remember in the memo that it, it, where we mentioned that the first thing we looked at was just trying to identify kind of averages within each of the canopy sized classes. That, you know, that might be a relatively easy way to, to go about administering something like that. But based on the variation with all of the different species, it was realized, okay, this, this may be problematic. Um, so then we started looking at, okay, what if it was done by species? But there is, there is such an administrative piece to that, that we want to make sure that we're cognizant of time and cost for everyone involved. That's why we want to put, we wanted to put all of that out there for the commission today. We were purposefully not making a recommendation on that because we wanted to make sure that, you know, the conversation was had internally, recognizing all of those things that we're looking at and that if there were, um, there was a direction that, you know, knowing all of that, that the commission wanted to propose, we wanted to make sure to hear it.
Think that's back in your court, Cynthia and the rest of the commissioners is, we just laid out some different ways to go. Move forward with Title Eight, uh, do Title 18, but hold off on the mitigation until we've got a lot more, you know, or more developed information to support it. Uh, hold them both until the mitigation piece is done. Maybe hold them until we have the data back from the canopy.
So my preference, obviously, we've all said we want to move forward with eight. Um, I think we can move forward with 18 as well. Um, I think it's really just the mitigation piece that we're so close on. Like, I think we're closing the gap that we all agree. It really has to come down to just a canopy, you know, replacement for replacement, and that might take a while, I don't know. So I don't know how we can move forward with 18 until we figure, figure out the mitigation.
Well, I guess I would suggest we have a motion, somebody, if there, if there's an interest to make a motion to move eight forward. Um, and that way eight, because there's a lot of great information and, uh, regulation in eight that Matt can implement as soon as it's worked its way through the entire process. Then we can make a motion to hold off on 18 until, um, some additional study and data collection and analysis is completed. Um, and a couple more changes are made to the mitigation, uh, strategies, whether that be, you know, a certain number of trees. If there's, I, I don't think that there's anybody on this commission who's prepared to move forward with any of the mitigation measures that were originally proposed from staff. I think we're all pretty comfortable with a mitigation measure that is database, that is, uh, a result and an outcome of some further investigation from Matt. And I think we're all open to hearing what that is. I do think we're all anxious to get this moving forward. Um, and so if I'm incorrect in those statements, uh, then I would propose we give Kelly, um, an action tonight that allows her to move forward with eight, and we're very clear by motion as to what we want to do with 18 for the time being.
Can I add two other things to consider as well? One is the education piece, so to, to both, the, the planning commission asked questions or they, they weren't all answered. I mean, even though it was styled as a workshop, I don't, I mean, you didn't have a lot of people, at least during the time I was there, um, talking and answering those questions. So there has to be an education piece, whether it's with the commissioners, whether it's with the general public, you know, about what is this is about. And secondly, I do think that we need to move forward with the process improvement. So Kelly's mentioned a lot of times, there's a lot, uh, behind the scenes, it's not in an ordinance, it's just how they do business. Kelly, I mean, you may want to include in your motion to encourage staff to rapidly im- implement whatever process improvements they need to do. That in of itself, whether it's having Matt at a table, uh, when permits are discussed or whether it's, um, you know, consultation throughout the agency, just like what Matt just described. They're, they're out on the city plaza and he's being involved in figuring out how to preserve the current trees. You know, all of those things are just ways of working better together and that's half the battle, right? So I don't think, I think that maybe whatever you do should come along with the message about more education and process improvements. As, you know, you know, sooner rather than later.
Well, okay. I, I wouldn't think that it's our job to tell the staff to.
It's not, but I mean, it goes along with it.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't know, what do you think, Kelly? I mean, would that help? Or does it support the direction you're going?
I am happy to hear any input and feedback from the Urban Forestry Commission that they would like to provide. So certainly, I think that, you know, if that is a recommendation they would like to make, we will, we would love to hear it. It's something that, you know, as we move through the process too, if we need to, um, uh, report on the, the actions that were taken by Urban Forestry Commission, we can include that in there, absolutely, I think support for that is, would be great.
And Kelly, one more thing, and maybe think about this too for the team. Maybe once you process all of this input, maybe you and Kelly should rework a schedule, you know, think about, you know, check into each of these things. How long will education take? How long will Matt's thing take? And at least update the team. Should rework a schedule, you know, think about, you know, check into each of these things. How long will education take? How long will Matt's thing take? And at least update the team. You know, even if you move forward with eight, update the team on 18, you know, what do you see needing to take place and then what timeframe? You know, for the next meeting perhaps.
Thank you. Yes, I, yeah, I imagine that once we have an updated schedule, um. Figured out, that is absolutely something that we would let the Urban Forestry Commission know, for sure.
So back to you, Cynthia, I'm sorry, I just. Wanted to say there's a few more things that has to happen too, you know, to get to 18.
Understood, okay, um. Is there anybody who's willing to make a motion to recommend approval? And the continued process of Title VIII?
Well, let me ask you a question. I mean, this group has already approved Title VIII. I guess the more of the question maybe you're looking for a motion. That you would push forward with one and do some additional study on the other?
Yes, I thought I said that already, but, okay.
It's getting a little late, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, no, I just said it, and I probably didn't say it right because it's 8:16 now and I've been sitting here since 7:16 this morning. Um, okay, so does somebody want to make a motion to? Hold off on Title 18 until some additional. Effort is done by Matt and staff and move Title VIII to the process at this time in conjunction with directing staff. Please move forward with any and all pass, process improvements if they can. Um.
Education.
Pardon me, and education, yes.
I put forward a motion to approve that. This is Anna.
Thank you, Anna, is there a second?
This is Trish, I second that.
Okay, thank you, Trish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, is there?
Well, thank you so much for all the input and discussion today, I very much appreciate it.
Is there any other housekeeping that we needed you, Kelly?
Not from my perspective.
We need to take public uh, comment?
Yes, of course, that would take us back to the agenda and we have to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the public who would like to make a comment at this time? Karina, do you want to tell us if there's anybody in the public?
Uh, there are no hands raised at this time, um, but we do still have item B2.
Okay, well, I can't see the agenda, so I don't know what it says.
I'm gonna stop sharing. So, there we go.
Okay. B2, discussion for tree details for Public Works Design Manual, Matt Basil. And Khalil Wilson.
I mean, is it practical to do this right now? I have to ask this question.
Well, I would ask this question. We unfortunately put it off from our last meeting, if not two meetings in a row. I feel bad.
Khalil, are, um, are you in there?
I am, I'm here, sorry about that, I was getting pulled over.
Yep.
Um, we want, do you want to go through with the presentation? I leave it to the, I want to continue forward to another meeting, I'm more than happy to, to go either way.
Are you sure Khalil? Because I feel terrible about it. How about we promise you to put you as agenda item A1 after all? Even before council liaison report, we're gonna put you right up there before.
Right up the top? Okay, I. It, you know what, it, it's, it's, it's okay either way. Um, it, it kind of, it goes along with the discussions that you're having, you know, it'll be in line with a, a lot of the, the, the priorities that you, that you, the Urban Forestry Commission has. Uh, put forward. Uh, so you know, it, um. I'm, I'm willing to, to, to wait till further, a further data to present. Uh, Matt has done a fantastic job of kind of working with our group to, to. Um, improve the, the tree planting detail standard. And you know, maybe there's a few more um, of these discussions that get flushed out with um, with um, with, with planning and Kelly. Uh, maybe it, it might spur some, some further refinement, so um, we, we may want to, you may want to hold off maybe, maybe one more time to, to, to present.
Okay, well, I, I do, I do feel really optimistic just hearing about. The collaboration between the various departments, that's really positive.
Yep.
Um, I'm sure everybody on the phone is delighted to hear that and uh, with Erin on the phone who assembles our agenda. Um. Erin, can you please make sure that Khalil's presentation is the first thing after roll call and approval of the agenda?
Yes, I'll do that for sure.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you Khalil. Um, we promised we're gonna get you first next time. Um, and, and I, and I think just in the timeframe, you know, there'll be more collaborative discussion that will only make it more fruitful.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to agenda item C, Board Commission Committee Members Reports and Announcements. Anybody have anything to offer?
Yeah.
Bruce?
Cynthia, I'd just like to state that um, I, I think we made some real progress here tonight with, with the ideas on the. Tree preservation and, and what direction we want to go. Um. I think maybe we were overcomplicating things uh, a little bit in the last meeting. Uh. And I feel pretty good about it. I, I, I think it was, and, and at the end of the day, we were probably. Really getting ourselves balled up over something that is going to be a fairly small amount of trees in, in, in the scheme of things, but um. I, I think we made some progress here tonight and I look forward to taking it across the finish line.
Hmm, thank you Bruce. Anybody else have any other comments?
If I could just um, just remind everyone that, that Arbor Day is April 29th. And we're doing a tree planting uh, April 30th, um, which is going to be at Dick Taylor Park. Um, and I'll have signups through, um, Keeping Trucking Meadows Beautiful that I'll, I'll send out to the group if anyone would like to participate. Um, and um, this, this year will be our 40th year as a Tree City USA. Um, so I think that's, that's really significant and it's a, that's a big milestone. Um, it's been. Uh. Kind of overshadowed with uh, you know, the code update and everything going on, but it's, it, uh, that is a pretty special uh. Uh, thing that we're, uh, we've accomplished, so, and it's important to. You know, to recognize that, that. Despite all the challenges we have, we do, uh, you know, we, we have been a Tree City USA for four years and that, that's a big accomplishment. And um. You know, and hopefully we can, we can keep that going and. Get this code updated sooner or later.
I'm just kidding. Has anybody ever been, has, has anybody ever been like kicked off of the Tree City USA list?
Yes, Las Vegas. So Las Vegas was actually the first Tree City USA in Nevada and they got kicked off the list and Reno has never gotten kicked off the list, so they are now the oldest.
We have to celebrate.
Yeah, Reno.
Hey, here's a, here's a positive fun thing. We've updated the um. The uh, relief Reno logo. Uh, simplified it and um, it has been placed on some. Tablecloths for our events, along with the words Urban Forestry Commission and City Reno. But also they've updated the city flag t-shirt. So in this quarter, starting April 1, a couple of days ago. Uh, you can buy, for, for this group, um, it comes with your uh, membership. Uh, a new t-shirt and so. I believe most of you have sent your sizes into Erin, but I think they'll be placed in the order pretty soon and. Um, Cynthia, there is a long sleeve option, there's a short sleeve option, there's a button option. So just um. Make sure that Erin gets your desire so she can get those ordered and. Uh, in place by the time we're having the next round of tree plantings or Arbor Day events and so on, okay? So it's ready to roll. It's all been done. Uh, it's ready for ordering. And Erin, do you need anything from us besides what I'm just saying?
No, I've already gotten everyone's orders and I've turned it into Nick.
Okay.
Okay. Well, the good thing is we might have them for the tree planting on the 30th then.
Yeah.
Terrific, that's great news.
Perfect.
And then uh, just, just uh. Uh, one last, you know, good news, we have, um, we've brought in, I brought in some truckloads of trees from, from Oregon and we have. Um. I think 130, like really nice caliper trees, bald and burlap trees that we're planting this year and then um, with. Uh, in collaboration with Nevada Plants and Keeping Trucking Meadows Beautiful Volunteers, we planted over 500 tree seedlings this year in our tree nursery. So we're really making big strides on growing our own trees and, and getting really high-quality trees to plant uh, in the landscape. Um, just thought I'd share that with everyone. And uh, let's see, hopefully. Yeah, so. Um. So hopefully we can adjourn. Unless anyone else has any.
Does anybody have, if we go to agenda item D, any future agenda items that we want to put on for our next meeting? Other than Mr. Khalil Wilson? And Matt, together, the duo.
I, hopefully we can finish this agenda, uh, or this uh, the, the code update. Um, but as far as for regular, regular items. Um. We, we still, we have all the, the, the coffee mugs from the. Um. You know, the, the relief Reno mugs that we made, so we, we can discuss that at a future meeting. Uh, and how, what we're gonna do with those. And then um, probably just an update on urban forestry, because we, we've been so tied up with the code update that we haven't had many updates of. You know, what our urban forestry program has been doing um, the past few months, so. Um, so we can put that on the agenda.
I, I think that's a great idea. You're right, we have pushed a lot of things off of our agenda. To make time and bandwidth for this item. Okay, so. Um, I guess since we didn't have anybody who wanted to make a public comment before, I'm assuming that hasn't changed. Um, Karina, you don't see anybody with their hand raised for item E?
Nope, no hands raised.
Okay, then I'll take a motion for adjournment. Does anybody like to make?
This is Bruce, some of. I'm really done.
Thank you, Bruce. Do you have a second?
Does Anna a second?
Hmm, thank you, Anna. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes, motion carries. Well, thank you, everybody, and I really appreciate everybody's dedication and hard work and tenacity on sticking through with this. Thank you, Trish, I understand you had some family issues, so thank you for calling in despite everything else going on around you.